Okay, so we've called the meeting to order at 6:35 and we'll do the pledge and then do our roll call. So if you'll join me in the pledge, Yvette has our flag ready to roll.
I have a mini flag too.
Okay, great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So as we have been following for our protocols during this Zoom time, we just do a roll call for attendance. And while this is a public meeting, just let everybody know who's in the room with us. Anybody is welcome. So I am present. I will change my name while we go around. And of course, I just have my dog with me today. So Karen.
Yes, I'm present and I am home and alone.
Okay, Janet.
I am present and I am alone.
Sahini.
I'm present and I'm alone.
And Janice.
I am present and I am alone.
And we have Ryan as Donovan, who is a guest tonight, and Yvette Kouser, our library director. So when we do have an appointment with Jason LaCombe from SMP Architecture. But Ryan, so we are here to talk with you while we wait for Jason to join us about becoming a trustee alternate. As you can see, we've been meeting via Zoom because of the pandemic. And here we are. So I sent you some information. What I know of the trustee alternate position is that it's a one-year term that the alternate serves when an elected board member is not able to make a meeting. Janice, can you tell us more about what your experience was like? Or maybe something I don't know, so Ryan knows what.
Okay, well, initially I came to meetings and mostly just listened and learned is what I mostly did. And there were a few occasions where I was called upon to vote if I felt I wasn't, didn't have enough information or didn't feel comfortable voting. I mean, I can always vote abstain. So and a year later, I was running to be on the board.
So it's my understanding that the alternate comes to all the meetings but can only vote when the, there aren't five trustees. Is that correct?
A quorum.
A quorum, okay. So if there's a quorum. So Ryan, do you have questions for us or want to tell us like a little bit why you're interested in becoming a trustee alternate?
Sure. So I'm a, I'm a working librarian now. I'm a library director in Southborough, Massachusetts. And I also, I also have a part-time job working. I was originally in the children's department, but I actually work in reference as well now at the Belmont Public Library, also in Massachusetts. So I'm from Nashua. I grew up there and I worked for the New York Public Library for a couple of years. And then I moved back in 2014 to accept the position in Southborough. I guess recently became a homeowner, but really a condo owner in Merrimack. And I love Merrimack. I think the first thing that I did, like the first week I was here was I got my library card. So I've, it's, it's an odd time, I think, for people to go in and visit the library and get a card. But the staff was very nice and very responsive. And I really am just here to help. So that, that's sort of my interest. If there's anything that I can do to sort of assist you guys and, and to help support Yvette and what the library is doing. I was watching that feature that Max did with the public television where he did the interview. You know, I thought, I mean, I, I don't know that Merrimack, the Merrimack Library really needs help. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job as it is, but you know, I'm in town. I'm looking to get more involved and see what I can do to help volunteer and, and you know, assist.
Excellent. We always need help. Everybody, no, everybody always needs help. There's never that. So Yvette, do you have any information about the trustee alternate position that I'm unaware of? Because I, Ryan, I've only been on the board for, I think this is my second year, but so we didn't have an alternate. So Janet, we, I don't know who else was on the board when Janice was the alternate, but maybe there's more information or anything that you can add.
I mean, I remember Janice coming to talk to us and then the next thing, I think Rick was the chair and told someone at the town council, I think, hey, we want to recommend her. She went to a meeting. They said, great. And didn't you get, didn't you have to go in front of the town council to get like blessed?
You have to be officially appointed and then you have to go to town hall and swear in.
Swear, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
They give you like a little piece of paper that says you're an alternate for a year.
Yeah. And then she came to meetings.
Yeah. So that, so that is the one thing, like you would want to come to meetings so that if there was some, a time that we needed a quorum and you were the third person, we would need you to know, know what we were talking about, obviously. But I think it's a great way to get involved with the community. And yeah, Yvette, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, no. I mean, I'm not a trustee, so I, I only have the library director's perspective. You know, I think it is a good way to get involved, you know, um. You know, I, yeah, I think also an alternate position seems to be, and Janice, you can speak to this, you know, a good way to learn about the board before you really commit to three years. You know, if you, if you're concerned, some people are concerned about committing to three years.
I mean, I originally saw an advertisement actually in the newspaper for the alternate position. And I love libraries. I love the library. So I thought, why not help out the library? And that's how I started my trusteeship, if you will. Yeah, so I learned a lot. I've learned a lot. I learned a lot the first year. I've continued to learn a lot. I don't bring the library background to it, but I bring a passion.
I love that. It's great. Thanks, Janice. So, and you know, if you have any other questions for us, that's great. You're welcome to sit through the meeting. I mean, the next step for us is to make a recommendation to the town council. So you know, if, if after meeting with us tonight, you're like, forget it, like, let me know. And you're welcome to sit through this meeting if you'd like to. You're welcome to not. It's really up to you or to stay for a little bit. So whatever you would like to do. But I thank you for taking some time tonight to meet with us, but we'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to stay, but I think, you know, since I'm, I don't want to take away your time or be distracting in the background. So I'll probably just go dark, you know, if that's okay.
That's fine.
But I'm, I'm very familiar with sort of the appointment. My board is elected in my town. So I think it's a little bit of a different process. But I'm, for all intents and purposes, I do meetings kind of in the Yvette role, like in Southborough. So I'm very familiar with sort of how, you know, the board structure works. And then I, I kind of know exactly where the line is, you know, where, where I can, you know, if Yvette needs help or wants to ask me a question, then that's okay. But I'm, I know she's the director and I would just be an alternate board member. So I'm, I'm clear on that and I'm, I'm happy to meet with town council. I mean, I've, I've watched a couple of the, the meetings too, like the town council meetings. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of familiar with some of the people in town and with the manager. So.
Yeah, awesome. So we are all elected, just so, so we are, the five of us are elected. Yeah. So the five of us are elected and then New Hampshire state law allows us to also have appointed board members. So that's sort of where there's an additional one. So yes, we've all done the election thing. So yeah. So yeah, great. That'd be great. So if you want to go dark, so you can like drink your tea or whatever you want to do. Or get up and walk around as I do sometimes. So when, not with these meetings, but other meetings.
I did eat lunch today. So my big thing is like, I want to watch the meeting, but I'm going to be eating during it. So like you, no one wants to watch that.
Understood. Well, thank you. And if at any time you want to jump in, it is a public meeting. So at the end, we do have comments from press, public and board members. But if you had a question, of course, we would be happy to take it as we're going through. So, okay, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you for your time and it was nice to meet all of you.
You too. So I guess, thank you, Ryan. I guess we'll just, I'm sorry I didn't go around and everybody introduce themselves. I kept waiting. I wanted to give him time while we were waiting for Jason. I kept waiting for Jason to jump in. So if and when Ryan attends another meeting and we'll make sure we all have a chance to introduce ourselves and tell them a little bit about us. So I hope that's okay with everyone. Um, since Jason isn't here yet, we will move on to our old business if people are ready to do that. Sounds okay?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. So old business, we have our December action items. I feel like we've met so many times since then because of our wonderful retreat, which I felt like went really well and was really productive. Okay, December action items. Treasurer to contact Edward Jones regarding stock donation. That's been dealt with, right, Janet?
Can't hear you.
Yeah, that's done. It's completed. The money is over. There are the stock donation is over sitting in our fidelity account. And as soon as we get the Quimby Trust for you to sign, we can move it forward.
So on that note, I did reach out to Krista and I may have told you guys that she told me Matt Upton had the signed form. I emailed him on the 12th, I believe. And then I, and I haven't heard from him and I emailed him again today. And I CC'd Janet on both of those as part of the finance committee. So in case any more questions came up. So yep, I've reached out to him twice. If I don't hear from him, I will call his law office. So he has the signed document, so I just have to make arrangements to sign for us. Let's see. Library director to create PO for shelving project and PO for air purifying units. That's been done. We had some questions, which I think Yvette will address later on about that. Trustees to determine date of January retreat, done and done. Lib bot, Albot Chair to find document regarding trustee alternates. Janet sent that to me and I forwarded it to Ryan. Library Director to ask staff for libraries statistics, excuse me, since start of COVID-19 pandemic. Yvette, I don't know if you've had a chance to do that, if there's any.
We, she sent us statistics.
Okay.
I have, I don't know what I sent you, but I have, if you saw my desk, I have a lot of statistics spread out. I think, I think you probably.
1920.
Okay, you have the annual and that's the statistics, statistics we report in the town annual report. I asked them to break out March to October, you know, we opened September 28th. So I haven't compiled that yet. I haven't compiled that yet. That is, that is not as straightforward as you might think, but working on it. So hopefully, hopefully February I can get that so we can really see. I mean, right now I'm working on the annual report and the, the state report. So I'm kind of, I'm bouncing between a couple of different kinds of statistics, but I will put that for that.
Thank you. Library Director to find out if sample mask can be sent out by vendor.
There's a sample mask in your drawer.
Okay, I have not, I'm, I have a book waiting for me, so I shall go in. I don't know if anybody else has had a chance to go in to see the mask? No? Okay, thank you. Review action items from Albot Retreat. I think that was from the last one, from the September Retreat, which we went over in January at our January Retreat and found that we got a lot done. Library Director to set goal to talk about strategic plan with Library Board of Trustees. This is just an ongoing, I believe. Library Chair to contact Employment Attorney regarding Library Director's Letter of Employment. Yes, I have. And I did email you the motion based on my phone conversation with her, which we can talk about later on. Is there anything I missed? Okay, great. Moving on. Let's see. Next, budget presentation to the town council. We did that this past week. Yvette, Janet and I went before the town council. And yeah, I think it went fine. You know, they didn't seem to have that many questions or anything. And Janet, Yvette, would you like to add anything to that? No? Okay.
I know. I thought it went fine. They were more interested in how's it going now? As opposed to what our budget really is.
Yeah, I think we actually, you know, went in there feeling very confident and comfortable with the budget that we presented to them. So that made it much easier that we were, well, I think we were a little bit less than last year and the trustees contributed more and we did apply more money to services. So that is really excellent. So great. Mask order. Yvette sent us a quote, which we have. But if people haven't been to see the mask, I don't know what your thoughts are on that. If you want to look at the mask first or if we want to say, you know what, masks are masks. We want to get this or what are people's feelings on it? Thoughts?
I, I think we should go ahead and, and order them. That, that quote was, I think, back in October or something. And it's for 100 masks, I think. And it's somewhere like between $300 and $400 or something like that.
$408, $408, yeah.
And I, I, I would love to have a, a library mask to wear around town.
Yeah.
And, and I'll bet you, you know, everybody's getting a little bored with the same old, same old. It would be another nice gift and I'll take it. So if, if everybody else thinks it's a good idea, let's just, I don't know. That the quote is only supposed to be for 30 days. So I hope.
I bet, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's up to what other people want to do, but I think it's the only thing we've been talking about as far as doing another perk for the staff or whatever. So.
And I also wanted to get them to the friends and, and other supporters of the library. Like, I feel like that's good. Janet, what do you think for financials? It's $408, something the trustees can swing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Sahini, any thoughts?
I agree with Karen. I think better late, better early than late, you know. I think everybody started getting the COVID vaccines early and then.
Yeah, I think we're still be wearing masks for a while. So.
All maybe, hopefully, but still, like, you know, hopefully.
Yes, yes. Let's do it. So.
Let's do it.
And I think it will be a good gesture from the library, like, you know, for friends. They have been supportive and the other, even maybe a few to the town council and members and.
That would be good.
Very nice.
Members, because they have been supporting the library too. So, you know, in one way.
Great. So then I will make a motion that we buy the 100 masks for Janeway for $408. With the assumption, Yvette, that you guys didn't pick up the mask and go, oh, my gosh, this is horrific. Like, there's nothing, okay, it's, okay. All right.
Karen had, oh, she's second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, I will vote in favor, Karen.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Sahini.
Yes.
And Janice.
Yes.
Okay. Well, Yvette, I'm sorry that I had you get the mask and then we didn't even actually get to feel it. But like, you guys would have been like, oh, my God, this mask is horrible. We absolutely can't get it. So that's the.
You can still feel it.
Okay. But I just, I, again, I'm guessing if you guys got it and you were like, this is like so thin, like, we're not going to do. You know what I mean? If it was not a good quality, you would have been like, eh eh, no. So.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I think it's nice. You know, none of us wore it because that would be gross. But I'll have a drawer, you can look at it, but it's nice.
I'll wear it and let you know what I think. Okay. So, all right, thank you. And then the annual town report, which Yvette sent to me, I looked over, it looked good. I just wanted to look over one more time before I said, sure. And if anybody would like to see that, Yvette, did you send it to everybody or just me?
No, I usually just send it to the chair, but I, I mean, I can send it if you guys want to read it. It's fine, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's really a nice overview of what the library did to address issues during the pandemic and, and what we have going on with SMP and some other things. So, yeah. And, and it had a lot, the appropriate use of the Oxford comma, which I do look for and I love. So thank you.
Well, now I have to see it.
I'm a junkie. I love commas, but I do love semicolons probably. Just to let you know, I'm happy to send this. You know, it's a, it's what you see in the town report. It's the narrative. It lists the current board members. And then there's kind of a brief statistical report, same as what Karen, you just held up for 1920. I, I was going to do some of the COVID, but between March and June, it, it, it was a mess. So I didn't do that after all and we can deal with that next year. And then it lists the library staff. What town hall has asked for in recent years is, you know, to list everyone's staff. List if it's a part-time position, they want that in parentheses. And then when we have people leave or join in the middle of that fiscal year, it's going to say, you know, you know, hired September 2020 or through November 2020. So that's just a pretty standard format, how we do it. And it's four pages this year. I'm also working on a graphic like we did last year, if you remember. And this is in black and white. So it just shows a visual of, you know, how many cards, how many visits we had. I am putting different things in saying, you know, the building was closed to the public between 317 to 928 and the book drops were closed to the public between 317 and 61. You know, but that's, that's another thing that I think is a nice visual, which it will be printed in black and white, but what we've kind of handed out in the past, last year was in color. So that's something I'll attach to it. And then your, your finances, Janet, also go in, you know, which you sent ahead of time.
Okay, great. Thanks, Yvette. If you just want to take a look at it, like I said, I mean, I took a quick glance at it, but I did want to like, look at it. Just give it a once over when I was, you know, on my first cup of coffee and ready to go. So. Janice, did you have a comment or a thought before we move on?
I love seeing the graphic. I think it's so cool.
It's really neat.
I would love to have a copy of it.
Oh, sure. Yeah. No, when it's all.
When you're, when you're ready.
Yeah. So Sahini, last year Yvette did a really great infographic from Canva that just showed like a really nice snapshot of what the library did. And it was like, you know, if you don't want to read the whole report, it just gives you a really nice overview of how the year went and it was really well done.
Yeah, I'd like to see it too. So whenever, whenever you're ready.
I can probably send, you know, tomorrow, maybe, depending on how long we go.
No, we're, we're moving right along.
You're going to look forward to that email tomorrow.
So policies, are there any policies?
Um, no, what we have, what we, I want to tell you what we've been working on because it's taken many, many weeks. We're, we're updating the dress code, the staff dress code. This is part of the larger staff policy manual, which is a binder. And we've done kind of, it seems like we've done pieces of it, like now we have an illness policy that's new because of COVID-19. And that would, would be included as long as it needs to be included. But we had a, we had a discussion about what the dress code is because we have some new staff and they were asking questions. And so we looked at other libraries' dress codes, other school dress codes. I had, every single staff has looked at the dress code and, and responded, sent notes into the dress code. This was weeks and weeks of department head meetings. And we've come up with something that I think, I think is going to work. We'd like to try it. And I think some of the challenge has been, you know, with our dress code, it says, your clothing should be professional. But when you give that to someone who's new to the workforce, they have no idea what that means. And it's really, it's something that needs to be defined. And in order to define it, you have to be very specific and that's really challenging. You know, because my thought as the director has always been two things. You want to distinguish yourself from, from patrons so people will know, oh, that's someone who works here. And the second thing I've always gone with, and this is stuff from my old, my old library in Indiana. This was how our director thought, you know, the public, the patrons should be able to see themselves here. So it's fine to have tattoos or piercings or whatever, pink hair, that kind of thing. So what, during this discussion, it was pointed out that those two things might be interpreted as conflicting. You know, and so then, so then we had to have a lot of deep dives. And I think, you know, I would like to have the staff dress in a way that is suitable for their tasks. And, and something that they're able to express their personality. But at the same time, it should, it should, geez, we had so many conversations about, the responsibility is on each individual. Jason's just coming into the waiting room, so I'm going to let that. The responsibility is on each individual to manage their own distractions. You know, and really a very different mindset with not putting the fault, not using that kind of language on an individual, especially when you're looking at clothes and sexualizing the clothes. But to really, you know, if someone is wearing a certain thing and they bend over and, and now we see things or, and it could be the backside of people that we see, that's a moment. And this clothing is probably fine. But the staff has to be responsible to make sure, you know, we had a long debate about the length of a skirt, how to measure the length of a skirt. If there's a violation, who's doing the actual measuring of the skirt? But it really should be in the same way that the staff, we're, we're entrusting them to do their self-help checks in the morning. And I'm not taking temperatures anymore because, because we're, we're make, you know, the responsibility is on the staff. They also need to be responsible to go through their closet and say, this does not work. You know, and we're trying not to use the word appropriate either. We were really trying to update the language so it's inclusive and allows for, you know, if, if we ever hire someone who has a religious, you know, guideline to wear a certain something, then we want to be able to have that. And the language was very vague. No one knew how to interpret it. There was a whole, whole discussion of should, should people wear denim? Should people not wear, you know, jeans, sneakers? And I'm like, I want you to wear clean clothes and I want you to come to work. You know, I don't think that you need to overthink this stuff too much. But I want to make sure people know that you're someone who works here. So it's, it's, my question for you is, you know, I think if we have a problem with it, as with any policy, it would come up to the board, you know, if there's really a problem. So you should look at it. But at the same time, you know, we've made suggestions for, you know, how we're, how we're hearing from the staff about actual articles of clothing. So I'd like to send it to you. And probably I can send it, you know, and maybe we discuss next month. Just because in terms of the timing of your meetings and our meetings, it, it just didn't align. And I was prioritizing the town report and not cleaning up the dress code. But I do want you to look at it. And you should. But that's also a piece, it's just a piece of the staff manual, which should be looked at. The last time it was reviewed was 2017. So that's something also. And I'm not sure if you want to look at the, at the staff manual in pieces or sections or chapters or on a whole, it's, it's, it's a substantial document. So maybe two questions for you.
So let's put that, like, just make a note, that'll be going on to our action items to take a look at that. So we have Jason with us, right? So I don't want to take up any more of his time and make him wait because I'm sure we could get into a very lengthy debate about clothing, but we'll just, we just won't.
Welcome to do so.
Yeah, it's all good. All good. So, hi, thank you for joining us.
Hi, how's everyone? Let me turn on my.
Hi, how's everyone? Let me turn on my video. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
It's great to see you all. So, sorry if I logged in late, um, but it sounds like you have plenty of things to talk about.
Yep, it's great.
All right, okay. Um, is there any preface we need to do? Or is it all, all on me now?
Yeah, it's all you. It's the Jason show.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I wasn't here if you were ready. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So, tonight, um, we have, well, we're gonna do a few different things. And I think the important thing to, to keep in mind when we're looking at things is, these are not what I would consider fully vetted designs. These are approaches for how we could look at your existing building to better accommodate the library's needs. Right? So it's, it's very high level planning. Um, we have taken it to a further level of detail than we normally may. Um, but I have three concepts to show you, um, for how you may be able to modify your existing building, um, to, to meet the library's needs. Um, so the, tonight, we're gonna focus on these three approaches. Next month, um, assuming you'll, you, you have time for me, we would look at options on the other alternative sites, um, that are on our list to look at. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, um, but again, I'm gonna show you some things that, um, might raise some questions. Uh, like I said, there's three concepts, pieces and parts from different concepts, um, can be intermingled into a refined, uh, advanced design. And that's really the conversation piece. So I think tonight it's really, what strikes a chord that you like? What strikes a chord that you really don't like? Um, and sort of what, what makes sense, um, in terms of moving forward if modifying the existing building is the approach that you chose. Okay, is that sort of, set the constraints enough? Excellent. Um, so can I, um, do I have the ability to share my screen? Host disabled pers- participant screen sharing.
You're the host now.
I just made it up.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. So if I did it correctly, everybody is looking at a colored, uh, site plan of your existing conditions. Can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, I'm gonna flip between two programs tonight. And the first is just to get you familiar with the orientation. Uh, we're gonna walk through the existing building together. Uh, I know everyone's familiar with it, um, but it is important to, um, just get consistent in how we want to look at things. So, uh, this is the existing floor plan of your building, um, Daniel Webster Highway, Babu Sik Lake Road coming up here. Um, this is your entrance into your parking lot, um, and then your exit out by, um, that's the, uh, John O'Leary Center, right? Am I saying that right? Okay. Um, everyone oriented, so north, north is that way. Uh, north is to the side that says existing, and that's an important consideration. Um, when we start thinking about how the sun moves around your building, if you ever want to do solar panels. So it's always good to have that orientation. Everyone with me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to now flip programs. Can everyone see a three D view of your building? Okay, so I'm just gonna walk through some preset views that I set up for you with the existing building. Again, just to set a baseline. Um, so this is the view of the, um, historic building. Again, we're not putting materials in, we're not, we left a lot of detail off, as you can imagine, um, except, you know, this part of the building, which it is what it is. But again, this is just a massing study that we did, um, for each option. So when we pull back, you can look at the aerial view with the surrounding context, the highway, um, the parking lot coming up through. The view from the other side, does this look about right? Kind of feels about right, okay? Up the hill, again, these, uh, that flat roof that gives you all the challenges with the, the clear story windows. The view from, uh, the town offices roughly. And then coming back around. Okay? Everyone with me?
Yes.
So my, my plan is, um, Zoom sometimes makes it easy, sometimes makes it difficult. Uh, my plan is to walk through a site plan and then a floor plan for each concept and then a massing model. And then when we're done, we can come back and we can talk about each of the options. If people have really pressing questions, by all means, jump in. Don't, don't worry about interrupting. I really want this to be more of a conversation. Okay, so our first option, we have dubbed bookends. And I like to give them names rather than option one, two, three, or A, B, C, because inevitably everyone chooses the first one. So bookends, um, bookends was a concept that we came up with. I'm just gonna use my, my little doodle tools of the idea that you've got the historic building that really anchors the corner of the library that everybody really loves. And then you've got this center section, which is really a blank wall. So our thinking was, well, what if we bookend sort of this blank wall approach with another newer library addition? But something of equal sort of quality and design aesthetic that really speaks to what libraries are about. So it really shows this three-part concept. And that may be a bad idea, but, um, the more we look at it, the more it seems to make sense. Um, so this is a two-story addition in this area here. The other thing that we tried to accomplish was one of the struggles that we see in your parking lot area was that the parking lot comes right up almost to the sidewalk. And it would be really nice and just improve the, the visual and the impact of the library if we were able to pull that parking lot off and really set it back and create a landscape buffer. Not only for the parking, but also for a visual connectedness from the, uh, the addition. Does that make sense, everyone?
Yes.
So looking at the floor plans, bookends, as I said, is two-story addition. So we maintained the front entrance, we maintained the existing elevator. Can you, can everyone see my cursor if I move it around? Okay, um, the idea is let's come into an open concept area where we would put sort of the grab and go section of the library, new releases, magazines, um, digital media, so DVDs primarily, but, um, audio CDs, books on tape, uh, sorry, books on tape, audiobooks. Um, and really in this center section, and let's move tech services back to this blank, the blank wall, so it backs up against, um, the highway and create circulation and reference really in a senate, central area. It gives the staff more space, um, it gives the desk area more space, and it creates a visual, um, sort of hub that everyone can see and you can see everyone. It also allows cleaner access into the historic section where the teen room and the low room would stay in this concept. We would maintain, um, the, uh, a vet's office and the staff area. Uh, so this would still serve as the staff entrance, seems to make a lot of sense for how this layout works. Two main things that we did in the existing building was, um, add some additional restrooms on this floor with a little hospitality station. I don't always hesitate to call it a cafe, because that has some PR ramifications. Um, but we, we were able to get a couple of study rooms. And the other thing we did is we actually cut the corner of the building off on this floor so that it really highlights and exposes the historic building. And I think that's one of the things that, um, is really struggling with the connectedness between the original building and the seventy-nine edition, is that corner really dominates and overpowers the historic building. So a simple gesture of just cutting off that upper floor corner and creating a little roof section, um, we think would help a lot. We get additional stack space for the adult area, um, and then this, uh, sort of torqued, um, form, which just creates two light wells down into the children's area. So we were figuring, trying to figure out, how can we create a children's library that is in the basement, but doesn't necessarily feel like it's in the basement, that has some daylight coming in, that doesn't replicate the situation that you had before, where you had basically water collecting in a trough and then running into the building. So by creating this as a two-story form, um, we can create some open floor spaces with some windows above and, um, be very efficient and still let lots of light down into the children's area. Um, coming down into the children's area, as you can see, um, maintain the main stair, as I said, maintain the elevator. We created a little staff, additional staff office space in this section, which is now the children's library. And then we relocate, relocated the clump room, um, and not quite doubled its size, but it's a significant increase. Um, so it's about fourteen hundred square feet, where currently I think it's just shy of nine hundred. Um, and then reformatted this area where we create a new children's library in the addition and then get a little craft area, craft room, um, prep space, as well as, um, another family restroom, uh, for the children's library. Does that make sense? Did I go too fast?
No.
Okay, if I talk too much, by all means, tell me. So let's look at that model concept. So this is the view, you could see a change. So that's what you have. This is what we're proposing.
Hmm.
So you can see we're creating a two-story addition with a gabled roof. And then we're just going to extend that gabled roof over your existing roof. So your existing roof would most likely stay, it would be a mechanical penthouse, it would be, um, inaccessible space. But we would cover over all the problems that you have with a new sloped roofing system. Was the idea. You can see that little notch taken out um, of the corner. So let me just flip. So there's the view of what you have. You can see that corner piece. Let me zoom in. And then if you come back, so you can see how that corner holds with this little, um, terraced patio area. And then looking from the other end, now again, this is just a massing model, not a lot of detail, um, actually no detail. All we're doing is just trying to show this concept of gestures and architectural form where, you know, we'd want to create spaces, we'd want to create an element here that, um, is in scale with the addition, but really tries to not mimic, but reinterpret what that gable end does for this stairwell in the historic building. But do it in a way that really represents, you know, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. Um, you can see those angled forms here, so the gray just represents the idea of this, a lot of glazed, a glazed wall, a lot of windows. So those were those light wells down into the children's space. So unfortunately, I didn't get an opportunity to remodel the site. That's a complicated venture, uh, because of the terrain, uh, but that angle was set to align with the parking lot. So which we could look at in the site plan.
How, how many parking spaces do we lose?
Uh, I don't think you lose any, actually. I think you actually gain.
With the addition on the, on the left, on.
Yep. So with the reformatted parking lot with, and, and I made, I took some liberty liberties. Um, I'm not a civil engineer, but I've, I've done enough grading where I believe that this is plausible. Um, I got sixty-five parking spaces. And I think you have right around fifty now. Just shy of fifty. So I actually had additional parking spaces. Now, some of these spaces here really cut into the slope. So in final engineering, we may lose a few, but I think it's, it's at least what you have now, if not a net gain in this addition. And we get a vegetated buffer strip along the highway. Okay, um, looking back from, uh, town offices, we just put a little gable roof over the entryway, something that really, um, reads as an entryway, which I think is important. And then coming around, we just carried that gable across. So there would be some complexities and some challenges, um, in meshing these roof forms together. But it would, it would simplify the detailing and, and hopefully solve some of the, the ice damming and water issues that you've had in the past where those two existing roofs meet. Okay, any thoughts on that? Until the next one?
Hmm.
I would love it if it's white.
What's the total, um, the total square footage that has gained?
Ah, ha, excellent question. Um, so we are adding, I didn't add these together, but just shy of sixty-four hundred square feet. So between the addition and the renovation, uh, at, um, you're looking at just shy of nineteen thousand gross square feet for the library. So that includes stairs and storage and mechanical, that's gross, wall thicknesses. Um, you know, we didn't, we didn't do the net to gross, um, but we're adding, you know, sixty-two, sixty-four in this option.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, there, uh, each option is about the same square footage. There's some slight variations. You ready for the next one?
Yes.
All right, so this one we call level up. There's no mystery as to what this one is. Um, so when we were looking at bookends, it occurred to us that we were really impeding a lot on the site and really creating a long, um, building, which was broken into three parts and we, we thought worked, but, you know, you have to answer the question, well, what if you just added a third floor? So in this option, by pulling the addition back, so we are still doing a small addition on the end, I got sixty-nine parking spaces. So flipping through to this, and I'll just zoom in. So here, there we go. Um, we moved the children's library up to the main floor. Um, so it gets some significant increase in square footage. Um, but it, it also makes it more welcoming and accessible, um, for parents coming in, you know, with younger kids and big strollers or multiple kids. Um, and it just flows right through. So we created, um, what we call the welcome desk for, um, people coming in. We also located this security gate on this arc, um, with the idea that, um, we could lock off, you know, trying to think of, how would you lock off the building where you could have after-hours meetings? And that was something that the, um, the bookends version really didn't address. So this entire floor is dedicated to, to kids, to children. So we took what's now the low room and we called it the infant room. So the idea of, um, having baby babies, you know, younger than twelve months or maybe up to eighteen months, um, in there with parents, um, as a, an isolated area seemed to be a good idea. We also created, you know, a couple of restrooms and a craft area, rather than create a craft room. We just, um, would designate a space for it in this concept. Um, we punched through the existing brick wall on Daniel Webster and created, um, some large glazed openings. Uh, just be, again, thinking big gestures in the design. So, moving down, so the lower floor is all dedicated to meeting rooms and staff space in this concept. So, well, we maintained the clump room and we created a second meeting room that's a little bit larger, just over a thousand square feet and, um, consolidated all the. And consolidated all the staff offices into a larger space. And then turn the existing staff office area. Which seems a little too congested to us into additional storage space. So we still maintain the stair going up, fearing that's a perfect staff for a back a house stair. These two main stairs provide all the egress that we could need. So the idea of having this security gate is after hours, you could close that gate. We could use door controls and elevator controls where people could come into this entryway. And go downstairs, have meetings. Or use the elevator downstairs and have access to the meeting rooms, they would have all their egress. Allowed and the rest of the library could be locked off and secured. So moving upstairs, because I said this adds a third floor. So this is. This is a significant addition where we put all the adults and teen section on a new floor. Over the existing structure. There is a small addition, it's about twenty feet, that's only two stories, so no basement. So it would be from the main floor and, and the, the new upper floor. Any questions on that? Want to look at some three D?
Well, from all my time, I, from all my time on the library, we've been told. That you can't go up. So. This, again, this is just conceptual, this isn't feasible, right?
Why were you told you can't go up?
I don't know.
There you go. Go for it.
Because at the time. The technology wasn't as, as prevalent. And therefore, the third floor was going to be very much like this. Where all the books would, and the bookshelves would be on that or, or a good portion of them. And it would make it so heavy that, that. The framing and the foundation, it wa, it wasn't going to be strong enough to do that, we would have had. Okay, and you have more, Yvette, or I'm wrong?
It's, it's. What it is, is if we, if we have another floor. Then because of the weight of the books, they would have to put in. Like columns throughout the, what's now the main floor, and then you'd have a bunch of columns.
Yes, so.
That was the, why we can't go up because aesthetically, nobody liked it.
Okay, well, the. The, can you do that or you can't do that sort of approach really has. There's, there's two sides to that, because technically, I know we can make this work and we can make it structural. But the bigger question is, does it make sense for you from a fiscal analysis? And that's the challenge, because structurally, I know we could make it work. We could modify your existing structure, which would be intensive. We can build a new floor system over your existing roof. And, and really, it's the question of, does it make financial sense? And that's, that's sort of a broader. Next step, if, if architecturally this works for you. I don't have, I don't, I have little reservation about the technical solution of making this work. I have big reservations about whether or not it's cost-effective and makes sense for you. But, but I think those are, those are two different, really, questions.
I have major reservations about having the children's room on the main floor. I just, I just, hmm, no, I just, I can't tell you why, I just don't love that idea. I don't know if anybody else has a feeling about that, like, I love having two meeting rooms. I, maybe it's because I've really never seen that, but I just don't love the idea of everybody, if I was in there with my kids, I don't want every single person. That comes in walking through the children's, I don't know, I just don't love that, it doesn't feel cozy, it doesn't feel like. I don't know, that's just my initial impression is that I don't love that idea, I don't know if anybody else has any strong feelings about that, but it just. I like some things about this plan, like I said, I love the idea of the two meeting rooms, I love the idea of being able to. Close off part of the building to allow the meeting rooms to go on without having access to that, but. Just not a fan of the children's room on the first floor.
I actually love it.
You love it, really, I just find that as a parent, I would not love having, I mean, in Nashua, the children's room was on the first floor, but it wasn't right where you walked in. That everybody came through there.
So, I understand what you're saying, if, it's. Security concerns have become huge. Pretty much every library we're working on tries to have the children's area on the main floor. And it's because parents roll in with these enormous strollers and three kids. And the idea of getting them, you know, up or down, you know, stairs or elevators is challenged, so what? The idea here was to make this whole floor children's, except for this sort of entry between the welcome station. Sorry, let me zoom in. Between the welcome station and the stair, I lost my cursor.
Yeah, but then when somebody comes in the building, the first thing they're seeing, they're in is the children's room.
Well, they're really in what we would create as a lobby and a welcome space, so if I come in. And I don't have my kids with me, I have no reason to walk beyond this point. And that's sort of a visual cue of, do you belong here or not? I would go straight into the elevator or stairs and go up or down to a meeting or to the adult collection. But I understand what you're saying, it's, you know, this is, this is a big sort of approach change to how your library is currently.
Ava, you're really gonna have to sell me on that, I have, I, I, maybe it's because I'm in a school, I would not want that at all. Not at all, like, Yvette, you, you can try to sell me on it, but that's something I would not want, the first thing the kid, people see is the kids' room.
I think it's fantastic. And other lib, you know, my previous library in Indiana, they had the children's room on the third floor. And they moved it to the main floor, and this is in a city that's like Manchester. But I think that, you know, what's the message we're sending is, you know. Hi, the children's room is not in the basement, you know, and.
There, there can be other options from the first thing that people see, we don't have to get into like, you know.
Tell you on it, I'm trying to.
Not right now, not tonight, I like this, this, I don't want to be here till ten thirty, so like, I, you can try, but like, we know it's an option and that would be. I don't know.
So, so I think if, if this, and again, these are just approaches for what could you do? If you wanted to move ahead with something that puts the children's. Library on the main floor, what I'm hearing from you, Deborah, is, we really want to think about that entry space and make sure that it's. Warm and welcoming for everybody and not feel like you're walking into the children's library, and then you have to go someplace else, so we sort of need an interstitial space.
Nope, that's not what I'm saying at all, I don't want people to come in and the children's room to be the first thing they see, because I just think that it's. I understand why that would feel lovely and for people with children, but I just. We can talk about my security concerns, but I just don't love that the first thing that someone walks into the library is the kids' room right there. I just don't love it, and it's not because I wouldn't want people to see the kids' room, it's that just from a safety, I don't feel comfortable with that being. What we open up into when people come into the building, so that's me, but we can talk about that in more, but yeah.
Okay, well, let's see if this holds water. Anything, any other thoughts?
I had questions about that window space on the, is it windows where your little cursor is right now?
Right here, yes.
Because we've already had the window slash flood situation, would that be alleviated by your?
Uh, well, these are on the floor above.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay, yep.
Sorry.
Yep, so these are working to create some transparency on the big brick wall that faces the road.
Okay.
And these little sort of amoeba-like spaces would be, you know, finishes or sofas or. Window, you know, it would be something where it's not book stacks, they're more active spaces. And in this concept, you know, they would be active kid spaces, so game tables may be over there or Lego tables or something.
So, and I just want to say that I'm not opposed to having the children's room on the first floor, not at all, I just don't think, I think there needs to be more of a. A barrier between someone walking in the library and where all the kids are, like, I just don't love that.
Well, and, and that's what I was trying to say is, if, if there was a space here. Where it was more walled off and this had a different design character, and then there were openings or doors into the children's area, then that would. Sort of alleviate some of those, those concerns, but. Again, it's just an idea.
Deb, it's like, you know, when you go into Bedford. And you enter on the ground floor in the back, the children's room is right there, but there's a lot of floor space and there is some kind of.
I, totally, totally, but I just, yeah, I, I'm, again, I'm not opposed to it being on the first floor, I just don't love that. Walk in and it's right there, like, I just think that that's a security nightmare, I just don't love it.
No, you're, you're, I don't, I don't disagree with you, it, that is, it's a security concern in terms of. Not only people just wandering through, but also, you know, the, the four-year-old getting a twenty-foot. Head start on mom and making it to the door, so we have to think about all those things. Interestingly enough. I tried to move the children's library off the main floor in Lebanon to upstairs and. Boy, you'd have thought I was proposing to tear down their building. It was, it was one of the more controversial things I've ever said at a public presentation. So, it's okay. So let's look at some three, and any other thoughts on the plan?
Guess just personally, I don't like the infants in the low room, just because I'm, I'm partial to the low room. I like it being just a sitting area, but again, it's. I, I, I see it as this. It's an older elegant room and now you're putting babies in there.
I mean, I would also disagree with that. But I'm a children's librarian, so. Why can't, why can't the children have the most beautiful part of the library?
Well, if the library, they'd be in the whole new section, so. But, yeah, I think this is good, I think it's, you know, this is the beginning process, right? The end, and everything that you're hearing are things you're going to hear from people in the community, so it's good that we hash it out and talk about it and express our concerns because. You know, we're each representing a different viewpoint, so I, I actually love disagreement, so we're good, so.
Well, and it, no, this is, this is exactly the point, is, you know, let's throw some stuff up there and see what, you know, what strikes the chord, good and bad. So here, we were thinking, well, the low room is a beautiful room, it's got a fireplace, it's sort, sort of has all the flavor of. Your home, you know, a nice living room in your house, and what better place is it for your parents to sit down with a newborn? Or six-month-old and sort of be there, but they're in the library, so it just sort of felt comfortable and natural was, was our thought. Moving upstairs, once we get past that, the idea is, you know, this would be all the adult collection. With some, some sitting areas by the windows. And in order to not. Make the big blank wall even worse, we held the exterior wall back. You know, seven, eight feet, and with the idea of creating sort of an outdoor terrace deck on your existing roof. That would overlook the street. Which may not be the best place that people would want to sit and read, but it would really be active and it would enliven both the street. As well as, you know, some people like to just go out and watch. It's like sitting on your front porch, but you'd be looking down on everything. We did create a large teen room right next to the stair and then the central sort of reference. Staff workstation could monitor everything. Just want to make sure we get that out there. So looking three dimensionally. The idea for adding another floor, so you can see, the building is really tall. It has a, a very significant impact on the street front. In this option, we did not cut away that corner. So really, this whole intersection between the historic and the two-story. Needs a lot of additional attention for how that would really work. Both visually but also functionally, you can see the scale of the new building really does have a. In our opinion, a big impact on the original library. Looking from the other end, again, you know, we're, we're not at the detail phase, but you can see that porch looking up, so. This line represents the existing decorative brick at the top of the current building, so you can just get a sense of scale. Then the two, this idea of having a two-story window wall or sort of focal point. On both floors seem to make sense. Now, one thing we were looking at, if. If this was something you wanted to consider further, would be to make the addition, so this is currently the end of your building. Make this addition only a one-story, so it would only cover the, the main floor. And that would really reduce the scale of this elevation and the impact that you'd see coming from this direction on the highway.
I will say, I don't love it, but I love the idea of like, an outdoor porch, like, I just find that very intriguing. I'm not saying would it work somewhere, but just the idea of a place that people can sit and congregate and read their books and. I'll meet you at the library and then they sit outside, kind of like what our tables do now, but with an overhang, and again, maybe not in this, you know. Version, but there's something really like lovely about the thought of that, another community space, that's a little bit different, so, but that's.
It's a really nice amenity, it was, it was. Sort of born out of less a desire to create that outdoor space and more. You know, we don't want to make that wall taller, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying this is the plan, the plan for us, but I, I do like the idea that we're thinking of different ways to create spaces for. People to, to be, right, that not everything in the library is just getting a resource, but it's a community destination for people. They can be.
Well, I, I don't know what you're talking about, Deb, because that porch is my office, so, you know, I'm gonna be.
Okay, that's, we have our meetings there too, sounds.
So, so then we, we worked again because we had a, a much taller massing. This created some opportunity to really re. Reinvent or revisualize the, the main entry of the building, which actually. I think might be one of the more successful pieces of this design. So we just created a more welcoming porch roof, so this is a large overhang. And what that also does is it works to blend that sort of stark nineteen seventy-nine architecture. With the historic a little bit better, and it doesn't quite mesh everything, but. Again, if this was an approach that you liked, there's certainly a lot of design that would. Would happen in these areas to really make that work together and try and blend those, those two architectures. In a more successful way.
So, I have a question on the porch, I like the idea of the porch. I'm concerned about the safety factor, if it's like an open porch.
Yep.
Which is very close to the street, and if teenagers are biking on the side and if one teenager is upstairs. If, like, you know, some things might go wrong. So, so. Which is good, we would like to have more open spaces, but if it is like a little covered. I would say which can match with the architecture of the building would be more, I think.
Yeah, I think if, if, if sort of that scenario was, was a concern, we could look at. Certainly glazing that in and really call it more like a sunroom type, where you'd still get some of that feel. But less of the, the idea that somebody could sit up here and, you know, drop something down onto the sidewalk or a passing car, because it is quite close. Yeah, you can see the idea of these punched openings through the brick as well. You can see the idea of these punched openings through the brick as well. So again, they're not down in that drainage. You know, window well, they're up high. So I think I think those could be done, you know, fairly simply and definitely successfully.
Too tall.
Too tall. Yeah, well, I don't know. I don't know who said that, but yeah.
I did, especially from like where your cursor is, if you swung it around to that end wall. That just to me looks wow.
And that therein lies the idea of dropping this down. So you'd only get a one story addition. And the new upper floor would only be the existing footprint.
All right, maybe it just, it looks too tall for me right now, but we don't know.
Well, considering the scale of the other buildings in this section of the road, I I think I think you're right. I think it is too tall and we need, we would need to do something to soften the impact here. It doesn't bother me at the porch area because it's open and it really reads as a space. And it might just be because at this point, the model is so simple, but certainly something needs to happen there. I I I don't.
Take a whole wall of windows.
Yeah, it it looks more like another house from this side. Like it doesn't look like the library. Kind of that impact we what we want to have, like people can see from far and see that this is the library. It looks right. How is like this site, this portion? This before the porch.
Yep.
So that's like, again, it seems like it is two buildings, separate ones.
Yep. My my concern also, you know, because we're. We're equally critical of our own work. This this needs some work. It's it's a little out of scale with the street and this. The this really just overpowers the scale of the historic and I think that that gable end right there needs needs some work. All of which could be done if you like this at all.
Means for me, the entrance looked really good.
Okay.
Like I felt the entrance still matches with the historic to some extent. If we remove the kind of make made the top part a little lower like. This this above the entrance that little.
This here?
This here, that that height a little lower, the top one, not this.
Oh, this.
This, yes.
Okay, sure. Well, this was housing the stairwell and the teen room. So we could probably, you could probably bring it down a little bit, but I'm not sure it would. It would, oh, no, I went into a building. I'm not sure we could get it down enough.
I feel I feel.
Would accommodate it.
I feel like we don't really love this one, but yet there's certain elements we do and it's brought out some good discussion. So that's helpful. So maybe we can see the third one and maybe you will, you know, just to give us some perspective on things.
All right.
Yeah, if we can put that port somewhere else in some of the design.
How about, how about on the first floor overlooking a beautiful scenery somewhere? That would be just ideal. So.
All right. Well, then let's get on to the third option. So the third option. As you could see, the discussion on Level Up. Was a lot of what we had in the office. So. It was admittedly a little late in the game, but we came up with a third, the third option. So. It it lacks a little bit of color, but we called this one up and out. And this was the idea of if we're gonna consider adding a third floor, how do we soften both the impact on the historic? As well as the elevation and the view coming from north on on Daniel Webster Highway. So we had this crazy idea. Well, what if we turn the addition and ran it out over the parking lot? And really created a whole new form that is much more dynamic, but separated from the historic and could we successfully do it? In a way that that really lets the two buildings work independently. So that's where this came from. So it was admittedly a little late, but we were able to work it through. Although we didn't get color on the plans. So this. Come on, there we go. So this took some of the good ideas from bookends, mainly the idea of creating this recessed. Area that allows the facade of the historic building to stand on its own. So pull that back on the main floor, creates a center of circulation. And because the addition, the new upper floor doesn't align with the existing, we're going to put a new elevator right in the middle of your building and abandon or remove the existing one. So we'll turn that into. Storage closets or something. The collection would still flow out through here. And then moving downstairs, we would still have the two meeting rooms. A large staff office with storage room. Again, there's that new elevator. We would, we believe we'd be able to, you know, maintain everything else around, but this cutting in an elevator is not impossible, but. You don't, you don't take it lightly. It's it's a significant hole that we need to cut right through your building. So moving upstairs. This is where we put the adult and the teen. So the idea of coming up the stair. Into sort of the central arrival point with the elevator, some new restrooms. And here we tuck the teen room around the corner overlooking that porch. Sorry. And then let the adult collection. Flow out over the parking lot. So. This admittedly has some challenges. Both technically and architecturally, but it gets you the most square footage. So this is almost 20,000 square feet. Total and does not expand the footprint along the highway. So this this uses the existing end wall of the 79 edition.
And where's the children's stuff?
So the children's, we were going to maintain on the main floor. We just didn't have an opportunity to to flush it all out. This. Thinking of your concern, it would be possible. And it may actually make some sense to do meeting rooms on the main floor. Take all the meeting rooms out of the basement and expand the children's area. So the entire basement is children's area and staff space. There's some logic, logic to doing that.
What about, so you're saying that this adult part up here, I'm using my mouse so you can see me, that the adult section, that's on the top floor, but what's been, what's beneath that? Like what's beneath here? What's extending into the parking lot beneath that?
It goes over the parking lot. It's a bridge.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So not that we like to steal ideas, but every once in a while. So this came out of the conversation in the office and we stole this idea. So they did something similar in Exeter. If you go to Exeter Library, there's a portion where you actually drive under part of the building. More significant than this. So looking at that. Oh, wrong option, sorry. You get something like this. And this is also quite large in comparison to the existing building, but we aren't adding a third floor. So again, the idea that you'd maintain your existing parking, we would extend it through. So all of this would become parking. We'd pull it back and still create that vegetated buffer. But you'd actually drive under the new addition. And from this side, it gives us an opportunity. So this gets a little long, but again, we start to look at creating focal point elements on the on the building. That correlate with spaces within the building. And these two sort of feet at the end would most likely become some kind of storage room, outdoor storage. You could do a book drop there. You could, they would be spaces, but primarily there's going to be a lot of structural elements in there used to carry this this bridge. So the other benefit to this approach is this is the only one that really orients a roof line. In the direction of south, if you ever wanted to consider doing a soul solar array on the roof of the building. The other two options really wouldn't, unless you want to go back to a flat roof, really would not work well for solar. The other thing that this doesn't really resolve is the idea of creating a better entry and improved entryway. So your entryway really is quite understated in this option. Again, there are opportunities to improve that. But the idea that, you know, this is all self facing glass into the adult section. We do a large, nice seating area. So you'd be able to see activity. As you were driving in, people would be able to see what's going on out on the street. And it really just creates another opportunity for that visual connectedness between inside and outside. For the library. And then we would bring the idea of that porch back in. And then create a law, a single large glaze opening through the existing masonry. So the idea was, can we create an elevation massing? On the end that. Massing wise is going to overpower your existing building, but doesn't really compete with it. So we use that notch idea to separate the two buildings where this, the circulation desk. And entry almost become a link between two libraries. And I think that could really be a valid way to look at this approach. So that's what I got.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That doesn't mean the meeting's over. I just wanted to thank you.
No, that's fine. I appreciate that.
I guess, I guess, I. I would, I know there would have been some talk about maybe extending over the parking lot, but I thought it was going to be like. We built off the back of the library going across the parking lot and then the entrance became something different.
Okay.
But I think that was something that someone at Town Hall had mentioned to you that at one point. I don't think people would like this. I don't think I, I don't, I just don't, I don't know.
It it seems it it borders on. The ability for someone to criticize it as extravagant. It's, it feels extravagant.
I just don't feel like it goes with this.
It's like a bank.
Yeah, a bank or like it kind of, I appreciate what they were trying to do. And see, originally I was like, oh, cool. I thought you were going to tell me that. We were rerouting traffic and that the first floor then was extending under this and that that was where the children's room was going to be. So like still children's room on the first floor, which you bet is saying she likes, but not the first thing you see kind of around the corner. There's this beautiful children's room, but. Yeah, I, yeah, I see some teenagers driving into that too. So.
This feels a little overbearing on the original building. The historical structure, especially like, yeah, it feels more overbearing on the original.
Okay. It might be because of these big forms here.
Yes, because it's kind of a little, there's no matching element between these, like you're saying it's a different building. So mapping element as such to link it to the old one, to the new one, the historic one, to the new one.
Okay.
I'd probably disagree with that. Sorry.
Now, if you didn't have that, it's but we can like the thing, the car, the overpass is good. If the terrace was on that side and only the roofs, the side, something like that. I'm not the architect, but I would feel that the open, small open space towards over the parking lot. Would make it less maybe.
Okay.
Overbearing. Like if you have to have an open space, why not on the other side?
The, you mean this open space here?
No, the open space, what you have extended the. Adult reading section.
Yeah.
Why not a porch, open space over there? Because that overlooks.
Well, you probably could. Yep.
That can be like an open reading area, but. Like we have gardens where we had for the COVID, we had all desks outside during the summertime. We can have that upstairs.
Yvette, you were saying you disagree that you think this goes with the building?
I think it goes. I think there are a lot of. Repeated shapes, you know, and I think it's, I think, you know. If you go back to the first picture, we have this long and longer rectangle and this is not the long rectangle. You know, I think that's. I think that's interesting. I think it has a lot more interest in the outside. You know, does it, does it coordinate? You know, I don't know. I mean, I think right now the addition doesn't coordinate. And is it enough to just say we're going to do light colored brick instead of brown, you know, but I think, you know, this has a lot of the, you know. Same shapes. I think, you know, just, you know, the street is very noisy. It's very busy. You know, I think if you had an open porch or balcony or something, anywhere on any side of the building, we're still going to hear the fire trucks because. The fire trucks are so close to us. So that's kind of. You know, and I'll tell you, someone said a teenager is going to hit one of the, you know, things for the bridge. You know, I I wouldn't put it on a teenager because my first year as director, probably my, gosh, my first, within my first. Couple of months, it was December and I started at the end of September. So just a handful of months into the job, there was an adult. Who was drunk driving and hit the electric pole right outside here.
I know, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have, I should not have blamed that on teenagers. It's just because I'm in the world of teenage driving. So you're right. It could be a distracted driver, somebody who is impaired. It's I should not have said that.
Someone whipping around the corner.
Yep. So I should, I should not, I take that back. It could be anybody who is driving recklessly. Like I said, I live in the world of teenage drivers, but I. I have a question for you. You know, the, one of the features of the original building is this beautiful hip groove. But we don't have, is it just, we don't do hip roofs? Are they just not, doesn't, don't make sense? Or what's the?
I think that's a great question. The. The real answer is these were trying to flush out an approach and a massing rather than design the addition. And the fact that, you know, we took it to the extent of starting to show railings and windows. It was probably a step too far at this level, because it's really. Because again, with any of these options, if you said, well, we really like the concept of doing a third floor and extending it out over the parking lot. And we like the idea that we could create these two separate masses, you know, the historic and a new, but we need them to work a little bit better. Then that's, that's a design problem. That's to say that that's. You know, do we look at hip roofs? Do we look at, because then we start considering materials and detailing and scale. I think one of the things. That I struggle with or we struggle with in this is less about the form and more about the scale of this gable end here and here. Is so far above and beyond what this is. This is, this is more, you know, 1990s office building.
Yeah.
So again, it wasn't the intent to design it. And make it work together. It was more, hey, here's an idea for how we could solve your problem.
Okay.
If it's a good idea, then we'll spend some more time on it. If it's a bad idea, then let's move on to something better. And that's sort of where we're at in this and in this meeting.
I think that whenever we're looking at trying to add something on to the original building, the problem I am having visualizing it is that the original building is very people sized in scale. It's very much like, and. You know, you could picture you're walking in the street and you walk into that and these don't feel as, like you said, on the same scale, they just feel like overwhelming compared to that with the bigger windows, like everything about the design. Feels so disparate from what the original one is.
That's a fair state.
It's hard to visualize that working together. So Karen, did you want to say something?
I would just like to see the first one again, just because now that I have these.
I would just like to see the first one again, just because now that I have these last ones in my head. I, the, I, I didn't know to look at that first one in.
That's okay.
In that, yeah, how did the pieces go together?
So let's just, let's just take a walkthrough. So the first option. So when you look at this. You get the idea historic, 1979 brick. And then another addition. And I, I think. Again, to, you know, to just preface this, this is not designed. This is, this is, there's some kind of large gable gesture with, you know, we, we would see having a fair amount of glass here. But the idea would be to really detail this and use materials and form that are of near equal quality in terms of design. But not trying to replicate the historic. And I think that's a really important subtlety. Where we want this to be of high quality, high level of detail. As this is, but reflecting, you know, today's library forms, you know, libraries back then were very different.
I, I think that notch idea separates it so that you can, you can see that you're trying to separate the two buildings.
Yeah. Just a little bit to show that corner of the original building. Which fingers crossed, we're hoping is still there buried in, in the construction from 1979. Would just be, would be phenomenal to expose and it would really make this building stand on its own.
Janice, go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm looking at this version versus the, the other two. And the first thing that's jumping out at me is the height. This height seems to fit more with the height of the structures around the area. Right? So like the town hall and I know this is like a car sales place across the street, but that other, those other versions were so tall. But I wondered even if the neighbors would be like, nah, we don't really like that. Your building is so tall. That's just a what's coming into my head right now.
Okay.
It just feels like it fits better.
So you can see that line right there represents the end of the existing building.
Right.
So this is all addition.
Right. But it's going like out, not up.
Correct.
I have a question on this, the end where you have put like the windows which, which will allow light going down.
Yep.
Children's room, how is that going to work like?
So in plan.
That's the bookend.
Yep. So on the main floor. These are those window walls. Here and here, there would be no floor here. So when I'm in the children's area, I could look up two stories to see the ceiling of the adult section. And then this would either be a guardrail, which would be ideal. But for acoustic reasons, we would probably do a glass wall. There. So you'd get the sitting area, you'd get the date, the sunlight, but the sunlight would serve both floors. Was our thought.
So just to Yvette saying like, if, say, Yvette, this was the plan. And again, just throwing things out there. Is there a reason that this, the children's room couldn't be over here in this corner on the first floor? But not like immediately when you walk in versus having it down below? Or is there more space if you do it down below? I mean, there's options, right? There's.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I think the children, the, the children's library could fit up here, but you're not going to get both, which means the adults are going to go downstairs. So which personally, I don't have a problem with, but you know, one of the comments that we heard was the adults really liked to go and sit in the lower room and claim it as their sort of living room. And this option really works. With that the best, it would be even better if we could relocate the teen space out of there. One of the ideas of this sort of torqued form was to create the teen room there. But that is a lot of square footage to dedicate to the teen space. Which you know, if you had. If you had a huge teen population showing up, you know, every afternoon after school. You could justify it, but I'm, I'm not sensing you're, you're getting that kind of.
Don't we have people that tutor?
That's a whole different, I mean.
Like if that space also had like a study room where someone could tutor a teen.
I think, you know, here, I'm thinking a couple of things. So I'm trying to organize my thoughts, you know, um, I think. If any, any, you know, I think if the addition, you know, we, we, we're we're not just going to build a thing on, but we're going to probably, I would hope, improve things that need to be improved. You know, but um, you know, we have a couple of folks who anchor themselves or used to daily in the lower room. So it's not, you know. It's not a huge population of people who are doing that, you know, but people want to sit in a nice area. And then sometimes that's by the window. Right now we have no one sitting anywhere. But you know, I I think the other thing about the teen area, you know, in my time working in Merrimack, you know, I wa, I was a children's librarian and I was the teen librarian for like a summer before I became the director. And you know, the teen, the teen area back when it was by the north windows always seemed to be, to be an afterthought. And when we created and dedicated a space in Henderson Room where it is now, then teens started to come, you know, we certainly want to have more and more teens come. And that's kind of a longer plan for us, you know, especially, you know, having a dedicated teen librarian, which we don't have. So. You know, I think, I don't think it's a bad thing to look ahead. You know, and I think, I think anything that is going, anything that we do here is going to be attractive and people will come. You know. So.
Is it, is it fair to say that we want to have the teen space associated with the, or near the adult collection? You know, a lot of it, there's, there seems to be a lot of crossover and a lot of libraries where, you know, adults will pull teen or YA books and, and vice versa, sort of tho, those age transitions. So we usually try and keep those close together.
Yeah, I, I think so. Um. I think so.
Well, this, again, you know, it's we don't want to overthink things at this, at this stage, but, but there is an opportunity certainly rate here where study room two currently is. Where you could, we could expand that. We could cut through the existing wall, do a similar gesture to this sort of sawtooth pattern. And really create a nice little teen space that would be maybe a little more gracious than what you currently have. And then any collection that was displaced would just flow down through the current teen room into the low space. That seems like that could be a natural. You know, evolution of this plan. I'm not sure if one study room would really be sufficient for you. Usually, especially in a library this size, you know, we'd look to get at least two, if not three, four would be really nice. Of some sort of varying sizes.
Well, you've certainly given us a lot to think about. So I don't know that we've made any decisions except for had a lot of great discussion about what we're thinking about and trying to formalize. So, um, which I guess is part of the process, right? So.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. And you'll think of more stuff and, you know, a week from now I'll hear from, from you saying. We really don't like. Did you think about, but also, you know, we want to keep in context that this is, this, what we're doing here is high level planning. So it, it would be very easy for us to say, well, let's choose an option and go and get in the weeds of design. But that's not really the goal of this phase of work.
Yep.
So we're comparing what you could do to the existing building with three other opportunities. And those will be equally generic. Now, for this, I think it would warrant if, if you were up for it and it wanted us to, where we would try and consolidate this into sort of one, what I would call an agreed upon approach. And we would put a little more design effort into it and really think programmatically, does it make sense? And, and what would you really do? And, and I'd be happy to do that as a next step. So.
I don't know about anybody else, but I don't feel like I'm up to that tonight. I think it would be great to have more conversation and think about that down the road. But I don't know if that's, if we should hear the, some of the other or see some of the other options first before we. I, I, I really don't know which way to go, what would be best. But I don't think, I don't, go ahead, Janice, were you going to say something?
I was gonna say, what are the other options?
Well, the other options at other sites like.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So I just want to make sure we're, I was thinking of the same thing.
And I think I need to sit with some of this and just think about it, you know, what it would look like. So.
Definitely. No, I, I wasn't expecting any, we like this, we like, we don't like that tonight. So don't worry about that.
Janet, did you want to say something? I hear Janet in the background.
Yes, I was going to ask, are we going to get a copy of your floor layouts and just even just like one or two of the different views of your bookends and level up and.
You're going to get it all.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah. I will. So this is a PDF. I'll make PDFs of the, the 3D images. And I'll probably have to upload them to Dropbox, but I'll send a link out where you could have them, everything that we looked at tonight.
That's great. This is great. It's really great. And like I said, I do, I do actually like disagreement. I think that's how you actually reach a consensus and hear other viewpoints. So I appreciate, are you laughing at me? I do.
Like your kitchen or something.
Oh, yo, you, oh, you would love it. Okay. But like, I think that, I think that, no, it's good because if everybody's just like, yeah, yeah, I like it. Like, we're not representing all the different viewpoints that people were going to bring to this when they look at it. And everybody has their own ideas about what is going to work. So that's how we're going to get to the best possible design for our town, right? And feel built something that, or come up with an idea that this community would want to get behind. It's from hearing everybody's different viewpoints and talking it out. So.
Well, I think it's really encouraging that. You know, there are actually three options. To, to renovate in this location and not in this location, because that was the thing that when we met with Janelle was, is this even possible? And wow, it's possible, you know, at least more possible than we knew the last. So that's.
Yeah. So thank you, Jason. That's great.
Happy to do it. So one thing, and again, it, it really shouldn't be a driver at this point, but at some point, somebody's going to ask you which one's the cheapest.
Yep.
So.
Wait, can we guess? Can we guess which one is the cheapest?
Oh, sure.
All right. I, I think bookends.
Yeah.
Yeah. So again, it gets back to that, that question of or the comment, we can't add a third floor onto this building. Well, technically I guarantee you, we, we can. But I also know that it's going to be really expensive to do. We have to basically create a whole new structure that spans your existing structure. And then reinforce your existing structure. And then we have to raise the elevator up, raise the stairs up. It, it's not, it's not insurmountable, but it's not cheap. Whereas this option bookends keeps your existing stairs, keeps your existing elevator. Adds a very straightforward addition. This is also the most practical in terms of keeping you open. While you're building the addition and then renovating, whereas building a structure over your existing structure. There's going to be a time period in construction that could be significant where you would have to leave the building, you know, you, you're not going to, you're not going to hang. You know, multiple tons of steel over an existing occupied structure. Just it, those things are really not practical. So again, those, you know, bigger picture, but if it's the right solution and it works for you and it makes the most sense and it's the best design, then we can work through all of those, those other challenges. That's my, that's my soapbox. I'm done.
I have one more question. If I'm just looking, so we, for example, if we choose one of them. And then again, after 10 or 15 years or 20 years, the library wants to expand. Which of these designs will have that possibility or the chance? Like, because the concept of library is changing, there will be more technicalities added. I'm looking at that concept. So if there is like further design change, which will, which of these will be more from the architectural point of view?
Hmm. Um, well. I heard two different questions in there. Perhaps I misheard. The first is in the future, could we expand this building again? The other one is how are we designing this where it's flexible enough where the existing, the quote unquote existing building, so the addition renovation is flexible enough that allows you to evolve within your building envelope. And I think those are two, two different questions, but both important. The challenge there comes down to parking and how much site do you want to chew up? If, if you stuck with the idea that parking is never going to go away, we're not going to be all bicycling in 20 years. So cars are going to increase. We're going to need to maintain parking. My thinking is that the level up option is probably the more suited option to expand in the future. And that's because it gets you all the square footage now in a simple form where it would be very easy to picture. Another three story addition right there. Which could get you another 10,000 square feet. 9,000 square feet with minimal impact on parking, minimal impact on drainage. Minimal impact on utilities. Your elevator is already there. So that would be very practical to see happening. If you looked at the other site options here. You could foresee another addition right here that added another, so if that's roughly 3,000 square feet, you know, that's another three. So that would add another 6,000 square feet to your building. But now you're, you're getting really long and you're losing more parking. And so all those challenges. And then if you looked at the up and out. It would be possible to see a three story addition right here. Again, with minimal impact without really changing the bridge. Seems like that would be possible. And again, you know, you'd have that gable form here. So this would become a backdrop building. It would hold the corner. It could work. My hunch is level up is, would probably be the most efficient in that consideration.
Does anyone have any other questions for Jason?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. This is really interesting, really a lot to think about.
Was it, was it anywhere close to what you had expected?
I'm amazed.
No expectations.
Yeah, I would be that, like, I, I did, yeah, yeah, didn't know what to think.
Okay, I guess I do have one, just one. Mainly because I, I've heard it from several different people. Having, having an option where the, the addition essentially blocks the entrance.
That's what I was mentioning before.
Yeah. But so, and so in sense, the, like the staff door would be internal as opposed to how it is.
Right here.
And, and come, and then. And and come and then go west with the like coming down. So.
Yeah, so you basically take all these parking spaces.
Right. So essentially, you're toe like that entrance would be closed. And so it would be like weird out like an L shape. As opposed to.
You could only.
Really longer.
You could only come out so far before you blocked your your entrance.
The goal is to block the entrance, the entrance.
Block the.
Totally block the entrance.
So all the traffic would come in from this end?
Yep.
Wow.
I don't know if like from a safety perspective, can we do that? Can we have only one form of?
I've heard such a pregnant.
Sure.
And Tim. And, you know, this is not official, official, you know, but it was kind of kicking around. What what if I'm asking them what if? And, you know, this entrance is very close to the light. We have a lot of problems with this entrance, to be honest. There's always someone pulling in because someone else hit them, you know, and rear ended them and. Very. Yes. So they're they'll pull in here because of the turn. So one of the things that was kicked around was, you know, would it be possible to close off this entrance? And then make the library entrance church street and just make it two way. And like, sure, you know, but that's that was a right throwaway shore. And and I don't think anyone knows really what's happening with the church street exit onto the DW. I think the fire department, you know, likes to keep that so they can come in quickly in an emergency and access these homes over here. So.
Okay. So you 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 can do two way traffic, but it makes those access roads significantly wider. And then you have to think of the volume of cars. Well, one, you're gonna reduce your parking area. So I don't know how many cars you'd get. Hopefully, we could maintain the 50 that you have. But you have to think of turning and you have to think of all the maneuvering within the parking lot for that kind of volume. So again, it's technically, it's not that you can't do it, whether or not it's the best option.
Well, Jason, one of the things.
I'm on the fence about that one. Yeah.
Well, one of the things that was kicked around with this was that from the stairs up, you know, stairs north, that whole thing would be torn down.
That right there would go away?
Yeah. And then, oh, it's almost like you're replacing this parking at the entrance with that parking that it would become part.
Okay. It's an approach. Let me, let me, let me think about it. Well, here's.
Well, and you know, I think the other thing is, though, that it's been raised to us. So even if the answer is looked at it and here's some of the problems, we have an answer. So we want to make sure that we don't discount anybody, you know, this, this was somebody in, you know, from town who thought this would be a good idea, right? And has been mentioned a few times. So, you know, even if there were definite drawbacks, it would be good to know hmm, not wouldn't work because of these things, you know.
Well, I let I think that this is, this is, this is something frankly, I hadn't considered. The idea of closing off this entrance and and making this the main access and what opportunities that would present never really occurred to to us. Let me, let me noodle on that a little bit. Conceptually, I struggle with the idea of tearing down a significant structure, which admittedly isn't great, but it's there and it's square footage. And then you're gonna spend money to replace it. So you're gonna spend a ton of money and your net gain is gonna be very, very minimal in terms of overall usable square footage. And I think just fundamentally that I'm struggling with that approach. But I'll think about it some more.
Will it make you feel better if I tell you that the north window over here still leaks? With a door or, you know, anything.
Oh, yeah.
Because that is something we struggle with. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Depends on how the rain is falling.
Well, yeah, the whole thing. So, okay. I'll think about this. So next month, I would like to talk about the other sites, the other site opportunities. Two of those other sites have existing buildings on them. So, Evette, I was wondering if if I could plan a trip down and we could go on a little tour with those buildings? Is that something you could?
Yes.
You'd want to join me on? Okay.
And I'm wondering if the trustees can come up with some alternate dates for you so that we can devote our entire meeting time to you as opposed to being part of our monthly meeting? I know for myself, I feel like I would be better able to really pay close attention and know that I had all the time for just this one thing, not the other things that are on our agenda. So is there a better evening of the week that work that worked for you or?
Wednesdays are booked.
Okay.
Pretty consistently. Tuesdays actually do work well for me.
Okay.
Wanted to do something instead of.
That usually the third Tuesday. Yeah.
Yeah. So if we wanted to look at the second Tuesday or something.
Okay.
I could probably do something Thursday nights, too, if if needed.
Well, we'll we'll come up with some options maybe that work for all of us and you bet.
Sure.
Give them to you. If nothing works, then of course we'll we'll meet on our regular meeting night. But I think it would be, I can only speak from me, me and I I saw some people nodding, too, that it might be nice to have it on a different night.
Be fine. I I know I can get chatty.
No, that's that's. It's like exciting. And I was like, I know we have a lot to do, but I can't stop, right? So I think we all want to be able to talk about it and give it the full weight of our attention without.
Sure. Whatever, whatever we could do, that better accommodates you. I'm 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 all for it. Just just let me know.
Great. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
Janet, go ahead.
Yeah. So so if we did it on our normal mini meeting, it's like it's four weeks. So if we did it actually the week before, it's only three weeks. Is three weeks okay with you? Or do you want more like five weeks?
I could probably make three weeks work, depending on how soon I can get down and look at those other buildings. That that would really be a a a big factor. If we could do something early next week, I could probably make three weeks happen.
Okay.
No, I don't know. I'm not. I know I'm not going anywhere for February break, so I'm here anytime. So we can, I don't know about anybody else, we came up with some other dates, too, based on people's calendar. So, okay, thank you so much.
Jason, can you just make me the host again?
How do I do that?
Put your name.
Yeah. There's more.
Uh, make host.
Okay.
You got it?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Good to see everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. He's great. Those were great. Lots of things to talk about. But I hope that like people are okay with the idea of doing it on another night because I feel like we just got, we have a lot and we still have a lot on our agenda. So I we could probably keep talking about this, but if you don't mind, we'll just move right on to the next item so we can get through it. We're on to our director's report.
Okay.
Well, actually, we have the ledger and the.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on to our ledger. Let's do the ledger first. See. Okay, ledger, general ledger and invoice manifest. Anyone have any thoughts or concerns about that that needs to be addressed? Jenna, I know you had emailed Joanne about something, but that was.
Yeah, it was just like the, where is it? The incentive pay went through, which we had talked about in our last meeting that went through. So and then I don't remember if I I had something else.
I you asked about the, oh, yeah, here we go. Credit and a debit for the NHLT voice that was the members' membership for just so he really was the only thing do. Hotspots. Payment to T-Mobile is the monthly fee for our existing hotspots. Recurring charge, if you look in the past. Oh, that's a whole different, okay. Closing the old POs and reallocating funds. I have a different spreadsheet that will be more helpful.
Okay. So is there anything on the ledger or invoice manifest before we move on to the director's report? No? Okay. All right. Now to the director's report. Thank you for calling me back. Let's see.
All right. So, um, we received a gift from Teresa Fletcher, who's a resident and a member of the Friends of the Merrimack Public Library, donated several items to the Youth Services Department. Dinosaur mag former set and a Discovery Toys Magna Tile Set. Kathy would like to use these for replacement parts and for our in-house activity table when we resume those services. And I think I included a picture so you knew what.
Okay, I will make a motion that we vote to accept the gift of dinosaur mag former set and Discovery Toys Magna Tile Set from Teresa Fletcher.
Second.
And so he needs seconds. So he, I love that you're seconding things today. So, okay, I'm gonna vote yes. Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
So he need?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much to Teresa Fletcher for that donation. Okay.
Um, and then moving down into the COVID-19 reopening plan, just a couple of highlights. We've been approved by the National Passport Center to begin our acceptance facility services. All eight staff who've been trained have been accepted. We all have our. Yeah, and I've I've recommended to the staff that they have like a go bag with, you know, all the things they're gonna need, their stamp and black pens and so on. So they're not scrambling to get that stuff together. So those are all, those are all completely. So the next step for us is there were a handful of passport appointments that we had to cancel when we closed in March. And they're our first priority to call and see if they want to schedule an appointment. And or if they've already taken care of that need. And so we're gonna do those first and then we'll be ready to go live with this. But it's coming, coming. They were asking, the staff were asking, how can the funds be spent? And what is the procedure for request? They're very excited that they might be able to spend it on programming. So what would you like to do? Because we know it's gonna go into a special.
So have they, is this like after all other programming funds have been expended? Because I know.
They just they just got really excited. I said, let me just ask. So you know, so I mean, the first thing probably it sounds like is first, spend your programming money.
Yeah, for sure. Yep. Yeah. I think that's that's the, I mean, spend their programming money for sure. But I mean, I can't speak for everybody else, but it would seem to me if somebody has a great programming idea, you know, that's gonna require more like we had the lovely Jarik Krasoshka, you know, things like that, then yeah, like.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that I didn't ask them, but I know when when we've reached out to the friends to see if they wanted to sponsor anything, a lot of times it's to get their name out in the public. So that might be another angle on this, just to think of it in a different way. If we're if we're spending concurrently, you know, do you want to get? Is there anything the trustees particularly want their name on or, you know, want to sponsor? Then then that's another way to think about it.
I mean, does anybody have anything, any thoughts on that? Do they need to just, you don't need a decision from us today, right? I mean, or are you thinking we should have a generate a, I don't know, Janet, for the passport money, what areas can it be spent on?
It's special. It can be spent on anything.
Okay. So really, it would be like if they have something that they wanted, right? They would just need to ask for it.
Right.
True, like.
True. Yeah, I would, I would. I would use their programming money first.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, one of the things that is that people might think that bringing authors in or those sorts of things, they're super expensive. Like we, these are the kinds of things, those special events like that, that, yeah, you might not have enough programming money in your budget. Then so perfect, that's the perfect time to come to us because that would be the kind of thing that we would want to do. That's sort of, you know, above and beyond, right? So not, yeah, so I think we're pretty open to what they want. If someone has a good idea, I don't think we would.
Yeah, just just have a proposal.
Yeah, just tell us what you want. Just tell us what you want.
Exactly.
So he need, did you want to say something?
What does this funds? I'm just asking, maybe it's a not such a good question to ask. But what does this funds means? Do we charge?
Yeah. So, yeah, when when someone comes to the library and wants to have us assist them with their passport application.
Okay.
The agent, the agency, us, the library, charges. They just sent the thing out about any changes in in fees, but it's it's been $35 per application. So if it's a family of four, it's 35 times four. You know, so it adds up. And then people write us a check. We can accept cash. And then when you apply for your passport, that's just to manage the paperwork and and submit the application into the National Passport. And then, you know, I'm gonna pay $100 or $110 for my actual passport. You know, and that's gonna go to the to the passport center to make the pass. But we have a, we have a, you know, agent fee and processing fee. And we have to charge it.
I think that, yeah, the one thing I would just want the staff to know is like, yes, they should request it, right? Like, we are not a, we are not a bank. We are, I mean, we're not trying to invest. We don't want to be like the people in Hogwarts, right? Who have all of our, I can't think of the words, you know, in the little bank down there. You know what I'm talking about, right, Eva? Like, we want this money to be going back.
Bring us.
Thank you. We we don't want to be like that. We might be like getting the money back into the community through good programs and services. So they should not hesitate to ask us if they have a great idea that they think would really benefit the library and the community. So. Yeah.
Okay. Other highlights. So we've had a few incidents of non complaint behavior from patrons. Usually, this is when someone comes in and they refuse to sanitize their hands or wear a mask. And sometimes they want to go straight to the board. Who's who's enforcing this? I want to talk to your your board. And so this is when I was emailing you guys about your business cards to make sure that the the staff at the public desks has has business cards. Usually, it's been for the chair. I realize I have not made any cards for you, Deb, all last year. I don't know what you were doing at all the conferences you went to. You didn't have anything to hand out. So, you know, I can make business cards for you guys, for you to have and do whatever you want with. And but it was mainly to make sure that because they have my business card if someone wants to talk to the director, you know.
Yes, I have no problem with them contacting me, obviously. But how is this different from a regular complaint? Is this just because they immediately requested to come right to the chair versus, okay. And I I have no problem with people calling me or emailing me. I prefer email, but if if they could look at my phone number also. So if you want to put my home phone on there, you know, it's not like it's a secret. So. Yeah. Janice, I know you were and wanted to talk about this a little bit.
Well, I just feel like to bump up over that and I hear what you're saying, you don't want us to bump back down to you, you just want us to handle it.
I would love it if they bumped back down to me. But sometimes when someone comes in and they're already very angry, I want to speak to your manager, you know, and me coming out is only gonna escalate it more. You know, I I mean, it's a new, this is a new problem. This is a new problem for some of our newer staff, you know. And I know they do try to to manage it on their own, you know, and they don't want to come get me. They want to be able to manage it because whenever the director comes out, it's escalated, you know. And they're they're very good at managing it. But at the same time, I'm like, guys, if it's, you know, just call me. I'm sitting in here, you know, doing whatever I'm doing. And if you need me, come get me, you know, so. But yeah, no, this person didn't even want to talk to me. They want, they wanted to know who the trustees are. And I want to talk to the trustees. And that's their prerogative.
Oh, totally. Yeah, yeah, no. And I'm really, I'm totally fine with handling those phone calls or the emails. It's fine.
So my other question is, this happened to Rick and I, where a person just came right up to us and started to address something. And and at that time, the response was come to a board meeting and present your. This is. this is something different we're talking about.
You want. What I'm saying is, someone came in a couple of weeks ago, refused to sanitize their hands, was wearing a mask, pulled the mask down, went between the barriers, uh, the Plexiglas, and was in their face angry. And one week, we have security cameras and I looked at the security cameras. This is someone who's known, maybe they were having an off day. But, you know, what I started to say to the staff was, why were you answering their questions while they were in the building, not complying? Because at that point, they go outside. And I will meet you outside, or my director will meet you outside. You know, so there were a lot, again, new, this is new. We have a whole new staff on the floor and they've never had to deal with this. So, um, they were trying to help this person, but, but the person was standing there without a mask in their face, and they were still answering questions about, you know, why isn't this program going on? When is there gonna be a book sale? Who's in charge of this thing? Who's enforcing this? And, you know, instead of having the staff say, you have to wear a mask, it's, the trustees have, you know, decided that there, this is an enforcement. And we can say the trustees, the governor, the town of Merrimack, this is townwide, you know, and I think, you know, they, they have many things to pick from, but really, who is ma, who is making me wear a mask? Well, this is a trustee policy.
You know, and I guess, I guess, Janice, for me, if someone called me and wanted to have their voice heard and express their opinion, I would, I might not agree with them, but I'm listening, right? So I'm gonna listen to what they have to say. I'm gonna let them know what our rationale was and invite them to come to a trustee meeting. But that, I feel very strongly that while it is a mandate from our governor, we follow the, the law, the rules, the mandate, we follow that, you know. So I, I don't know that there's, um, anyone's going to get the satisfaction that they want. But if people want to express their opinion, they have a right to do that. And I will listen to them. So, that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that they've, that the staff have said, well, you can come to a trustee meeting. I don't think.
No, it's a Zoom. But they can, they can totally, you know, I, more, more importantly than that, I don't think that the staff should be harassed over something like this or put in danger with people pulling down their masks. So if the best response is, here's the card for the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, that they came up with this policy, please feel free to contact them. And we get that person to get some space from the situation and we have a calm conversation. I think that's a wonderful solution in this particular circumstance. That's just my thought. I have no problem fielding those phone calls and I would let you guys know about any conversations that were had. Or, or share the emails correspondence. I think a lot of people walk, walk out and calm down and don't pursue it, but if they want to, they can.
Right. And, you know, I, I, if we can get their information or if this, if they basically know, you know, it's a regular and, and we have their contact information, you know, I call them. I do the follow-up, you know, because I'm not, I don't wanna leave this hanging.
Right.
And it's, uh, I haven't connected with them yet, and maybe it just fizzled away. Maybe it was a bad day, but, uh, you know, staff are on notice, call me when they come back. Because I still have to close this loop, you know. Something happened and you didn't have a great experience at the library and you normally have a great experience in the library and what's going on? You know, everyone is heightened, everyone is heightened. And we know that. And, you know, how can we, how can we get to, yes, we were always saying, can we get to yes? So I'm doing follow-up. It's not just, you know, it passes by me and I never look at it again. You know, it's still on my, it's on my watch. But if someone says I wanna talk to the manager, then, you know, or I wanna talk to the trustees, then it's, yes, let me get you a business card and not scribble it on a scratch of paper. You know, that was what had to happen. I was like, oh, that's mine. That's, I dropped the ball on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't know what other people would want on their business cards. But I already told my husband, if, if there's a Merrimack phone number, just let it pick up the, the answering machine. Because I like to hear it before I, before I call back. I don't wanna be taken unaware. So, um, any thoughts? Anybody have any about what you want on your business card? Do you want us to just let you know if people feel comfortable with that? Okay. Yeah, but really, um, under normal circumstances, I'd say, oh, we follow the complaint procedure, which I know Janet and I had briefly talked about that we probably need to go back to, because I don't think we ever closed that loop. When Laura was here, we had some debates about the complaint procedure. And then that kind of went, the changes went to the wayside. But in this particular circumstance, yeah, just, I'm happy to talk to them or call or have them email me. It's fine.
Okay.
If it comes to that.
Okay, um, the, I'm just some things that I, the Granite Step Replacement Project, um, I had sent you the video of the, the problem. And I've been in contact with Jason. We were emailing, Paul suggested reach out to SNP, see if they have a structural engineer. So we're kind of like, there's a lot of things I have to follow up on. And Northern, Northern Lights also called me today saying, um, you know, I'm gonna get you a name as well. So I've got different people that we're gonna see how they can fix this and who's gonna fix it. And I'll just keep you updated about that.
Thank you. Thank goodness they found that, right? That's, uh, yeah, it's good to know. It's good to know. So.
Yeah, um, Granite Side, I have to call them. I didn't wanna do that at the same time with the police detail. It's just gonna be one and two, but that's ready to go. So I'll follow up on that. Um, I'm just trying to see what else I might have highlighted for you guys. I don't know if you have questions. There wasn't, I don't remember. I thought I kind of sent you an email, but maybe I didn't. But, um, yesterday, uh, our connectivity to First Light, um, went down. And I put a notice on the, on the website. So what happened was there was a fire on the Queen City Bridge in the morning. And Kevin, who is our staff at Gmailx, uh, emailed the board or emailed everyone, I think, and was just saying, you know, uh, you won't have access to this until this is fixed. And, you know, just, we put our notices saying you might have problems getting to the catalog or getting to your downloadables. Um, and it's, it was repaired by Monday morning. So that went through Sunday, I guess, Sunday to Monday. Sunday morning to Monday morning. Um, and we have a Gmailx meeting on Thursday, so I'm sure he'll talk more in detail about that. Because he was just giving us, you know, just shooting out these emails of updates whenever he heard. But it affects us because of our colocation room, where we keep those servers. Um, and it, it's, we lost the cable, you know, so I'll find out more, you know, uh, Thursday. Yeah. So that's, that's.
I have under the action items, we had the main floor shelving project, which I know you were gonna share a spreadsheet with us that explained that. So, um, so we had, we had voted in December to allocate funds from old POs for the shelving project. And some changes were made. So we just kinda wanted to hear what those changes were, why they were made. And if we agree with them, vote to amend our earlier proposal, just so that our votes are in keeping with what is happening. And, uh, we can understand why decisions were made that were different from what we voted on.
I don't, I wouldn't even put it in that kind of language. I, I mean, how I took it, um, was, here's what we'd like you to do. We've voted on this. Go see if you can do it.
All right. Well, so you just would've seen my eyes go like this, because I was like, oh, it was like really specific. So you.
I didn't have minutes and I took, well, I took notes. And, um, after the meeting, when the recording was converting, um, so that I could upload it to YouTube, which takes, takes a good half hour. So I had time to go over my notes and I wrote an email. So I sent an email to department heads. And I said, here's what the board wants to do. But I didn't probably write down in the detail that I saw in the minutes today.
And, and I don't know that anybody's gonna have a problem with what ended up happening. We just wanna make it all make sense, coalesce. And I thought there might be.
Well, nothing, nothing happened. Yeah. So I'm just telling you what we found out. Uh, and I'm gonna share my screen so that you can see the very latest spreadsheet with lots of detail that will show you how we moved through, uh, the POs. So let me show you one. Can you see it?
Yep. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so over here on this side, you'll see the, the kind of existing POs that you were probably looking at during that meeting. Um, and let's see, Joanne wrote me a, uh, an explanation here. So I'm just gonna kinda go off, off of this too. Both large projects, so this is the air purifiers and the shelving, will be expensed into line 158504 office equipment in the budget. So we're already, we're, we're looking at, things are getting paid out of that budget line. Two of the POs to close are already in 158504 office equipment. So when we close them, no money has to be reallocated. The instructions from the board seem to be centered on closing older POs and reallocating funds from the Canopy PO, Programming PO, and Verbal Judo Training PO. After closing POs and reallocating money from other POs, we're very close to the combined cost, $24,839.85 for these two projects. If there's enough money, there is enough money already in that account line. This is again, 8504, to cover the balance of $390.46 needed. So, um, here's what we have. So shelving will be paid for by using old POs. This is what I, what I was highlighting for, for staff. I said I'd tell them and Joanne and I can look at those and see if finance can close or reallocate. So the total cost for shelving is $12,839.85. So we went to the old ones and you've got, um, here's, this is fiscal year 1819. That's how you know it's old. Here's the budget line would be programs. This is the, um, there was a PO for $5,000 that you highlighted, saying, you know, we should use that. Um, and then when Joanne was looking at these, she was just had the two projects and was adding them up so they could get to the total we need. Okay? Um, so here's one that can be, you know, it's doable, we can do it. And it gets us $5,000 to move to a different line. Okay? Um, and then this is the other one. Canopy was something that, you know, I, I think I had mentioned at the time that Max had said, oh, we don't need that much. We can pull 7,000 over. Um, and so that one is here, and that also can fit under shelving, so it adds up. Um, and then we still have money to finish paying for what we need for Canopy for this year. This is another really old one, fiscal year 1718, um, that you brought my attention to. Amazon, this is materials, that's the budget line. This was for Makerspace items, um, and so this is the total on that PO. And then she, uh, to make it add up correctly, split, you know, she's proposing, let's split this PO and it can actually go into two spots and we get to the shelving total.
That's actually exactly what we asked you to do.
Right.
That, that, but that's, okay.
But here's the thing, she highlighted the yellow. These are the things you haven't voted on. Okay, everything else, as far as we're checking and double-checking, uh, minutes, um, and my notes say, oh, you voted on some things, but you, this is the math that she came up with when I gave her this task. So this is an old PO, fiscal year 1819, Amazon, the barcode code scanner, which is an office material that we never got. 700, it goes straight over 700. That's easy. Here's one, 1718, old for materials, a little bit left on the PO from that year. This one was already closed. So, um, it appeared on your, on your spreadsheet at the time, but that had already been, um, spent and closed in the time that, you know, probably I printed it off and, you know, finance closed it. Uh, but that's already been spent. So that's not even, um, that's not an option right now. This one here is, uh, last year, 1920, Demco. This is the book sterilizing unit that we were thinking of doing for COVID mitigation. But the better option that we found was the air purifiers. Um, and so this is a lot of money that goes straight, you know, it's kind of like, uh, kind of a clean, a clean, uh, it's, it's, yeah. Um, and then this is another old one, 1819, which we had set aside for in-person verbal, verbal judo training. This is training that, uh, you might remember, uh, dealing with, uh, trying to get people to comply, especially if they're hostile. It's an excellent training, but with, I've already spoken to our trainer, trying to set something up, as a virtual program, and we wouldn't need $6,000 because he wouldn't travel and wouldn't need a hotel. So we can shave 2,000 off of that and still have enough, hopefully, to bring him in this spring. Um, and so that would go into the air purifier column to get us up to almost the 12. Um, and we need a little bit more here. Joanne says that this is, um, this is already in the line and it's such a small amount, we don't have to move it from another line, because it's in the line. It's already in this budget line. Um, so she was pretty confident that that would be okay.
So I think that we were looking at spending more on the air purifiers.
Uh, no, that's the cost.
Okay, because when, when I look at the minutes, it says that we, we also requested $4,500 from SNP. I think we were thinking it was 14,000. Does that sound, ring a bell to anyone? Yeah.
14,500.
100, yeah.
But if it's less, great.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it's less. And I think some of it was the, the, uh, amount that we ended up buying. You know, I'd have to go back and look through emails, but it is less. The other thing is because you had mentioned the SNP here, um, you wanted it to be on the spreadsheet so that, you know, you would know that we looked at it, but we found the money in, in these other old, um, old POs and small POs that it seemed to me was a priority to close those before going for like new money. And, you know, I think, you know, maybe to be, maybe to just be prudent, since we already found the money here, you know, you don't know really what you're gonna need out of this. What, we don't know what further we're gonna need to pay SNP. So until we really are confident that we're not gonna pay them anymore, we can keep the PO open or we can change it to a lower number. And then the money doesn't, Joanne doesn't feel it has to go into materials, because we already have a lot of materials and maybe it goes somewhere else, but I don't necessarily know where.
Okay. So I think that we, um, I don't, we don't need to talk about SNP tonight. I think there's no harm in just holding it there. But I guess we want to, um, see if there's any discussion and if we wanna make a motion to accept this new plan or, or to just authorize you to spend money out of the OPOs. Because just so that it reflects that we did not take the money out of the SNP line, like we had said in an earlier motion. So, any thoughts, concerns?
I, I'm, make a motion to accept the payment structure for the air purifiers and shelving as seen on this wonderful Excel spreadsheet.
Jan, I just want you to write, mark down that on January 20th, Janet told you you had a wonderful Excel spreadsheet.
I just bring her a question going, uh, you know, we need to go over this. And I, I think they need more detail about our thought process, because Joanne and I must have met four or five times, just talking it through. And it's like, yep, that makes sense. Yep, that makes sense. Yes, let's go for the 1718, let's close those. Um, and I, and I can send you all the stuff in writing, so you have.
I think that's totally the spirit of what we wanted to do. We just wanna make sure that if we're saying $4,500 was taken from SNP, that no, we're not taking that money. Instead, the money is coming from somewhere else. Just, Janice, did you have a question? I interrupted Janet's motion, because I was so overwhelmed by her compliment.
I was just gonna ask her to say it again.
Actually, Yvette, if you could send us that, um, spreadsheet, that would be, um, the allocations of the, for shelving and air purifier. So then Janice can have that in the minutes.
Okay, do you want the written explanation too?
Um, no, just the Excel. So then she'll have, um, well, I guess, send whatever you have. But I mean.
Whatever makes sense, whatever you need to understand, our, you know, behind the scenes, or behind the scenes math. Okay, I will go ahead and I'll send that. No problem. Any other questions about?
It has to be seconded.
I'll, I'll second, that's fine. Janice, do you still need Janet to say more about the motion?
I was gonna second the motion.
Okay. Okay, I vote yes. Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
So Heaney?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Yvette, and thank you to Joanne for just clarifying that. And sorry that I was like, what? When you watched the video, I went, what? You'll see. It's nine o'clock. Let's keep going. Anything else for the director's report? Okay, treasurer's report. Can't hear you.
So I'm on my fines.
There you go.
December 2020. Fines, our opening balance was $8,060.62. And we ended the month with $7,865.90. And then after you scroll down to special, we started with $15,897.61 and then ended with $20,456.2. We started getting interest in our special account.
This is good.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions for Janet about that?
Minutes?
Do you have anything else, Janet?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to minutes then. Sorry, I thought I might have said something else. Okay. All right, I have, I have three sets of minutes before me. If I'm missing something, please let me know. The first one I have is the December 15th, which was from our regular December meeting. Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of December 15th.
I second.
Soheeney seconds. I'll vote yes. Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
Thank you. I have the public meeting minutes via Zoom, which were from December 22nd, 2020. This was the one that I did because we were, yeah, we had a non-public. Oh, I didn't send you the non-public ones though, did I? I'm sorry, I don't have the non-public ones before me. I'm not, did I send them to you? I think I might.
The non-public minutes, yeah.
I did send them to you, okay.
There's just no date on it.
Okay. I can change that. Okay, well, let's do the public meeting minutes. So are there any changes to the public meeting minutes from December 22nd? No? Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion, we approve the December 22nd, 2020 minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet. I'll vote yes. Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
And then the non-public with the correction of adding the date, which I will add to and send to you from December 22nd.
We'll make a motion to accept those with corrections.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll vote yes, and I will correct those and send them to you. And Janice?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Okay, 500. And then the last ones I have are the December 29th, 2020. It was our special meeting, our public hearing. I'll make a motion that we accept the December 29th, 2020 minutes.
I, I second.
Thank you. I vote yes. Janice?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, right?
I have a set of retreat ones, so.
Perfect, that's fine. I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything. I went back through. Okay. All right, so with that, we are moving on to our building exploratory committee, they have not met. Friends, do we have any news from the friends?
The next meeting is this coming, is it this coming Monday night? So nothing to report other than please come to the meeting if you would like to. 7:00 PM via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We had an attempt at a Marymount Public Library Development Fund Committee meeting, but they didn't have a quorum, so we just had a lovely conversation and it will be rescheduled. So that's all I have to report. And Town Center Committee?
Yes. We met on January 15th and had a very interesting actual meeting, talking about a number of things, the annual report and the status of various projects, including Woodbury Street sidewalks, which are, are in development in, in connection with the school district as well. But we actually came up because the concept of a five-year strategic plan was brought up to the town manager by the Town Center Committee's chairman. And she said that, well, actually, here it is in the minutes, that the Town Center Committee should interface with the Library Master Plan Committee because Nelson Disco, the town manager has requested that we include Town Center Committee inputs to the planning process and that I provide liaison as needed. So I didn't know whether I should come to you to ask about that, Yvette, or what. So that, this is in the meeting, in the minutes for like four days ago or five days.
Is this the Townmaster Plan or?
I think because, because the assumption is, is that the library comes up with its own strategic plan. And they want to know, and, and, and the town manager has requested that Nelson and the committee have your intent for the next five years. And I didn't know whether to say anything about our architectural studies or, or anything. So this came up, like I say, four days ago. So I, I figured there's no giant hurry, but I would bring it to the board and then Deb or Yvette or just give me some guidance and what you want me to do about it. But that's what it's going to say in, in the minutes when they're published. That the town manager requested that the Town Center Committee offers inputs into the planning process of the library for the strategic plan.
I think that's great. You know, the more input we get, the better. It's, it's not so much, you know, too many cooks.
Right.
You want to have feedback.
Some kind of a skeleton so that they know what they're going to comment on. And I didn't know where to begin.
No, I think you're, I think you're good. I don't think you could have said anything because we don't have anything. We have the old plan and we haven't started the new plan. So that's great. That's great news.
So, great. I'll, I'll, I'll bring it up again. So, but I, this is the first time in what, seven years? That the library specifically has come up as one of the project things, so.
Good, that's great. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Or popular.
Now, it's, that's wonderful. Thank you, Karen. Okay, so on to the Library Board of Trustees Committee updates. So Personnel Committee, we did have Yvette's evaluation that we met and discussed and that Karen and Janice had brought to us. And I don't know if we want to wait and it's just the evaluation, not the evaluation process or anything, it's just the evaluation form. So do we want to discuss that here or would people like to discuss that in non-public? We, I sent you the changes that people had made or the suggestion. So should we just discuss that? I don't think there's going to be a lot of discussion. We really went over quite a bit of it in our meeting. So would people like to wait and discuss that in non-public in case, or can we just address it now?
I liked your changes and I liked your wording for that one.
Yeah.
One line that you wrote DC next to.
Yes, just so you knew what it was, so.
The only thing that is my concern is that I think there's a little overlapping.
Okay.
And, and just, just for simplicity, but if you, if everybody.
Well, how about this? This was a very long meeting and I want to make sure that we devote our attention and mindfulness to this evaluation and the evaluation isn't done until March, correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So if we want to try to tighten it up and, you know, not have so much overlap, then we have time to do that still. We don't need to, you know, I think we want to get it done by February for sure. And Yvette, yeah, and it's, I think that, I mean, it's, it's not like every single thing, right? It's much more in keeping with sort of the Gmail fun. It's, I think it's, I think it's going to be, leads to some really interesting conversations and some good review of the year. So I think it's going to be a really positive, good experience because that's, I think, our mindset going into it. What's that?
Conversations are good.
Yeah, I think it's our mindset, we really took the approach of like, this is not evaluation, it's, it's like a review of the year, right? Because there's no surprises. We're reviewing how the year went, we're talking about where we're going with the future, that kind of thing. Janice, go ahead.
You just said earlier you like conflict, wasn't it? Didn't you just say that?
Well, you know what, but I want to get the conflict out of the way. When we look back on the year, it should be like, we, you know, all of our conflicts were resolved. And it's not that I like conflict, okay? I like disagreement. Thank you, Soheeney. Thank you, Soheeney. So, Janice, what are you going to say?
So if we come together in February and say, okay, this is the final document, should we start filling it out immediately and setting the dates for March already?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I know this has not really fallen to the personnel, but as you know, I did speak with the attorney regarding the change from the term. So from the three-year terms to what would be known as an ongoing term. So it was her advice that the board needs to make, basically make a motion to make that change. And that's pretty much what we have to do. So I sent you a copy of the motion that I would be making. So does anybody have any comments or concerns on that?
No.
No? Okay, so with that, I will make a motion that the Library Board of Trustees convert the Library Director's term of appointment to an ongoing term as permitted by law until a successor is appointed and qualified.
A second.
Thank you, Janet. I will vote yes. Janice?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you. So Yvette, we finally did this, so I'm really, yes, Janice?
Who seconded?
Janet did.
Thank you.
And I'll just write you a letter acknowledging that the board changed your, from the three-year term that this motion was made and that it was accepted on such and such a day. So, and yeah, they said it was either, it was either like a rolling term or an ongoing. So we just chose ongoing and it is what it is.
Okay. And then I can put it in my, in my personal file, I'll throw it in. So if there's any question in the future, we have a.
Yep, absolutely. Huh, thank you. And I do want to, and I do want to thank. No, no, and I do want, I do want to thank Janice who was like, so at the retreat, are we going to hear what's going on about that? And I was like, yes, yes, hi, can I make a phone call? So thank you, Janice, for reminding me that that was on my to-do list. So I appreciate that. Okay, Building and Maintenance Committee. I feel like we've talked about a lot of building things and we'll have a lot more building things, including the necessary repairs coming up. So, but Janice, or Janet rather, we have nothing really on that, right?
Something about the sprinklers and her directors.
Yeah, the sprinklers too.
Yeah. Go ahead. How do you want to, I mean, the building committee, I think the building committee maybe got together when we were doing the roof restoration a couple of years ago, but you know, right now I'm just notifying all of you.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. I mean, there are definitely, definitely reasons for the building, these committees that, you know, when needed. But no, I just was checking and so, but yeah, keep us notified about that beam, please. And the sprinklers, what, you know? Yes, there's a thing in your director's report about sprinkler upgrade.
Yeah, the sprinklers, don't they get, they have to get updated or something every summer?
Every 10 years?
Yeah. I think that's what it said.
Yeah.
Maintenance?
It was, it's on, I think, the first page, actually.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That's not really a big.
Just sprinkler heads.
Yeah, it's not like that there's a, there's not a problem, it's just, it's.
Okay. And finance, Janet, anything from finance?
No.
Okay. So review January action items. I will say for myself, I have to send the corrected minutes to you to give Yvette a letter noting the change in her term. And I don't remember if there was something else. Okay, that's what I have so far. What else do we have on our agenda? Oh, we, pardon me?
Just say ordering the masks.
Ordering the masks, yep, the masks will be ordered. Coming up with a date to meet with Jason, we could do that right now. Do people, do people think that going earlier? I hate to make him feel rushed, especially because this is like sort of an ongoing thing for us. But our regular meeting next month would be Tuesday, the 16th. Would we be better off pushing off a meeting with him till the 23rd?
We give him more time.
I think so. I have a program on the ninth, I always have a program on the second Tuesday.
Okay. So like, can we give him the 23rd as a date for a possible? Okay. If people, okay, I, you know, and I hope nobody minds that. I know it's, it's a lot to meet two times, but on the other hand, it's a lot to meet for, you know, this meeting was, would have been much shorter. I think it would be nice if we could devote all of our attention to what he's presenting. So perhaps see if he could meet us at 6:30 on the 23rd. So, okay. Yvette, you brought up the policy and the staff manual. So if we can just have that as an ongoing thing that we need to think about, how you want us to take an approach, you wanted us to look over the staff manual, right? Or did you want us to just look at the dress code?
Well, the dress code is the most pressing thing, but it's, it's also, you know, it's, the last time it was reviewed was October 2017. So it's time to review it. And I'm sure there are things that are different just because it's been that much time. So I can sit down with Joanne, we were the main people working on this, this big book, you know? And we usually, in the past, we've, we've done it, we've sent it to Sharon so that she can review it, you guys review it, you know? I don't know what order you want to have that done, but I'll sit down with Joanne and we'll kind of come up with some kind of timeline because it's, it's, it's big, you know, it's big. And there are some things like on the Nays List today, people were asking, do you have a Zoom policy? You know, so there are policies that are kind of coming up now that people haven't written. So I want to kind of go through and think about, you know, are there things that are missing that we think we want to add in terms of staff? Social media was another one that we've kicked around a lot. And I think maybe one of the social media, or was talking to the press or talking to the media, it's, you know, there's, there's. there's stuff that, you know, what do the staff do, you know, in terms of managing our, our public face to the, you know, to the public on, on the platform, you know, um, what, what does the trustees do? What if they're, you know, there's a lot of different, it seems like a lot of different pieces. So, um, I ha, I will put that on my, I will put that on my to-do list.
Okay. Um, I will review the annual report and just get back to you tomorrow. I'm sure it's fine, but I'll just look at it with clear eyes. And, um, and you were going to send that to all of us to take a look at?
Yes.
And then we have Ryan, who's still maybe here in the background. So, um, so the next step in the alternate trustee process is that we would bring that before the town council. So that's something to consider. Oh, he's still here. He stuck it out the whole time. So, uh, this was an exceptionally long meeting for us. It's, well, last month was too, but we've been getting better at our shortening of our meetings. So.
That's okay. I learned a lot. So I think that was really important. So.
Janice, go ahead.
I don't know if anybody else remembers this. I feel like I went to a couple of meetings before I got, before the town council. I don't know if that matters to Ryan or anybody else. Not that he has to come, but I guess if he wanted to come.
I don't know. I was not on the board when this all happened. So.
I think it's kind of, you know, if you are making a, a suggestion for an appointment, you're interviewing him and he's interviewing you. I mean, you want to see that it's a good fit. Um, I think, Janice, you were very, um, you know, not cautious, but you were, you really wanted to research this and, and come to meetings. And I mean, you always seem to want to know, you know, can I do this? Do I want to do this? You know, I mean, I think you were pretty prudent and careful. I don't see there's anything wrong with that.
No, I just didn't know if it's like personal choice. You don't have to come to more than one. You're ready to go. Great.
I just remember Rick saying, come on, come on, come on. And it was kind of like, maybe that was the reaction that we had to, it's kind of, come on.
No, I actually thought you were very fair that you allowed me to come to more than one meeting. So that was just what I needed.
Well, you know what? This meeting was long and we knew we had Jason. So maybe if Ryan wants, if you want to come to the February one where we won't have Jason and we can tell you a little bit more about us and sort of the direction of the board, because you really just kind of heard us interact, but you don't really know anything about us. So you might want to just see before you make that kind of a commitment to, uh, people. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that it's there. It's on our, um, yeah. So we're meeting February 16th and you're welcome to come again. And then we'll take it from there. So.
I'm happy to come to another meeting before, uh, you make a recommendation to the town council. I think that makes sense. If Janice attended multiple meetings first, maybe it's good if I do the same thing.
Okay, awesome. And then you, I do, I feel like we didn't really get a chance for everybody to introduce themselves and tell them, tell you a little about themselves and stuff. And that was really because we knew we had the architect that we were kind of trying to juggle to. So separating those meetings up will allow a time for that. So awesome. That's great. Thank you. And in the meantime, if you have any questions or comments or concerns, feel free to reach out to any of us. So.
Are we, are we meeting 6:30 or 7?
I think our regular meeting is, will still be seven if people want. And our regular meeting on the 16th will be seven. But we'll ask Jason to come at 6:30 for the 23rd. Yeah. So, okay. Um, upcoming events, the Library Board of Trustees meeting, February 16th, 2021, at 7 via Zoom. Friends of the Library Board meeting, January 25th, 2021, 7:00 PM via Zoom. And the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund Committee, we don't have another date yet for our next meeting, but I'm sure that will be in the works. So. Okay. And we don't need our non-public. We discussed, we will, um, actually add to our, um, items for next meeting for our January action items to just see if we can tighten up the, um, evaluation. So there isn't any overlap. Karen, if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I will get ahold of you for, about that and send.
Okay, great, great. Um, Janet, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, um, um, I am attending the NHLTA Ritual Roundtable on the 27th. It's from 2:00 to 3:00.
Uh, I signed up for registration. I have yet to get the confirmation from them.
And, and then I did look up, um, the memorandum of, of understanding between the town council and the board. It's a work in progress and it will be sent to all my writers out there who will do a much better job editing than I will. So, but I'll make a first draft and.
Okay. Great. We have to start somewhere, right? So awesome. All right. Anything else? Yvette, Yvette, were you going to send us something? You were going to send, that's a random. Wasn't there some webinar that you sat? No.
Conscious, it's conscious culture.
How did I miss that?
I don't know. It's, um.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's untitled. That's why. The, um, the email is untitled and it's from 19, 19, 2021.
Okay, I'll find it. So that's, that's on me. Sorry. I guess I didn't open it up because it was untitled. So, uh, oh, no sub, by the way, no subject, which almost makes me think spam. It was no subject. That's what it was. So.
I'm sorry. I should, I don't even remember.
Yeah. It's no subject. Yes.
Yep. But the other things I got, so I don't know.
You have to pay extra special attention to the no subject.
Yeah, I, I saw the Gmail. You know, I, this is really on me because I saw the Gmail's evaluation form. So I don't know. Okay. All right. With that, yeah, I bet you guys feel confident now. Okay. So, um, thank you for everything. I hope, um, you all continue to stay healthy and well. And, um, if we have nothing else, I'll just make a motion that we adjourn at 9:32.
Second.
Okay. I vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
Janice?
Uh, yes.
Soheeny?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can you stop us recording for a second?